I can hear you.
Just a lot of hubbub around it, so I think I've got a Spotify account.
Good evening. Welcome to the April 3rd, 2024 working session. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Beaman.
Commissioner Hodge.
Present.
Commissioner Labar. Commissioner Light.
Present.
Commissioner Machieski.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott. And Commissioner Somerville.
Here. All right. Next, we're going to move on to public participation. I'd like to remind members of the audience that you get one minute during working session, but you'll get three minutes at our regular board meeting at seven o'clock. And I'll also just add that our next board meeting will have the public hearing on the Public Safety and Mental Health Milage, where you'll have additional time to talk. So you get one minute tonight, but there's plenty more opportunity for you to speak. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak, come right up. Please state where you live and your name for the record.
Tad Weiser, Ipsy Township. Thanks for the opportunity. I think the, the, the goal of all the, oh, I'm, I'm representing We Rock and the Allies for a Better Mental Health Milage. And also with my union, uh, uh, Huron Valley Area Labor Federation head on as well. So the goal of all our groups and our members is to end up with seriously more money for effective mental health services and programs without damage to public safety. Most of, most, of, most of those we're all hearing from are seriously concerned that the current formula is inadequate and not wise policy to enshrine for eight more years. As you know, we're all hearing about creative alternate approaches, including separate millages and changing the formula, that there's plenty of time to develop for a November vote and that would likely draw widespread support, maybe more than an inadequate milage. We're open to hearing about the potential ordinance tonight, but we hope each of you commissioners will also be open to creative alternatives that are emerging from relative, from residents around the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come right on up.
You need to bend it. Christina Laronas, 151 East Texel Road in Pittsfield Township. I want to concur with everything that Tad had said in, in his statement. And we're, as a, I'm a parent of a, of an intellectually disabled person, and I'm also on the board of Disability Network, Washtenaw County, Monroe, Livingston. And I'm with Allies for a Better Mental Health Milage and We Rock. I'm wearing my We Rock shirt tonight. So we are not happy with the current allocation of funds in the CMH Milage. We want more. My daughter and her cohort want more. We, the parents of the people that are in that cohort, want more. We're exhausted. We need help. We're not happy to see as much money go undirected into the public safety, millages, into the public safety programs. In my township, we have a police department and the money goes, am I out of time?
I'm sorry. I think so.
Yes.
You'll have more time later and I'll be at the next meeting.
That's about it. I want to support what, what Tad had said, and I just want to remind you that we're not here to speak truth to power. We're here to tell you that we are the power. So, thank you.
Anyone else in the room? All righty. Anyone else online?
We don't have anyone online, Chair.
Okay. Last call for in the room. Okay.
Um, I'm Karen Holman from Ipsy Township. I, I'm supporting rewriting the village instead of renewing, and I don't think the ordinances will be sufficient. The W C S O money spent for mental health, crime prevention and support for returning citizens is important, but it only amounted to about 15% of the funds they receive. Also, they spent millions of dollars on, um, facility and equipment, um, improvements that, that don't need to be replicated. Um, I think an option would be changing the percentages or a separate mental health, public safety millage. I support more, I support public safety and also, um, it's apparent to me that CMH, despite the village, doesn't have adequate funds to pay workers equitably, evidenced by the increasingly high turnover and recruiting, recruiting problems. Let's see. But I do support the, the programs they were able to fund through the village. How many seconds do I have left? Okay. Um, CMH could improve the crisis team. Have, I think they should give some village money to youth, youth and family services, which I don't think they did before and developmentally disabled people, they could use funds. Okay. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. You'll have more time later. Thanks. Anyone else in the room? Okay, we're going to close public comment. Um, and do we have a report from our deputy county administrator?
No report.
All right. Do we have a report from the Board of Commissioners liaison?
No report, Chair.
Awesome. Okay. Um, well, and everyone's here now. So, um, before we get started, um, I just want to kind of set the table for tonight's conversation. Um, everybody should have a copy of the ordinance language. Um, and the point of tonight's working session is to discuss among ourselves and build consensus around potential changes to the ordinance. Um, and so that's kind of the focus. I hope, um, we can use our time to be focused on that. Um, and if there are other things relative to, uh, this, but maybe not the ordinance, let's talk about that another time. We'll have time at our regular meeting and at our next, um, meeting in, on the 17th. So, uh, would anyone like to start by offering some suggestions for what you would like to see changed in the ordinance? Commissioner Labar.
Thanks, Chair. Um, and thank you also for, uh, the patience you've shown as we've discussed the village and making, uh, tonight a, a forum where we can dive in a little bit differently. Ashley just passed out a draft document and I want to give some context, uh, to this document. And I want to preface every remark here, um, with the notion that this is, uh, an addition to the discussion, not a, um, direction to this body or anybody on the exact right way to go, but one idea to start with. So when we originally had the village back in 2017, we wrote the ordinance in part to address some of the things that were going on in the system related to mental health. Uh, that included both policy and substance, funding, uh, and labor issues. And that's why you can see, yeah, in the, in the documentation from 2017. Some of the folks at the table and some of the issues that were spelled out with greater detail. The question now is, if we have an ordinance for the renewal or a renewal, um, how do we provide essentially the same mechanism of input and accountability? And, you know, sort of iterative policymaking, uh, in the context of public safety. And specifically in the context of the fact that we're dealing not with a county department, but we're dealing with an office and specifically that, that office is led by an elected official with both mandated responsibilities, uh, but also, um, you know, the, the authority vested in them, whomever they may be as an elected official and as a countywide elected official. And just to build on that, um, in the state of Michigan, we elect our attorney general at the state level and we elect our sheriff. Uh, there's no other law enforcement official at the municipal, the state or the federal level that we directly elect. It's those two. And so that has, um, I think added significance in terms of accountability, in terms of openness to the public and in terms of, um, appreciating the role they are in that our, that our state constitution sets up. So I took the language that we had from our current ordinance and drafted modifications to it to try and fit, uh, the language and substance of public safety. I reached out last week, uh, to, to Derek Jackson, um, for a few reasons. One, I've, you know, I've got 20 years' experience working with Derek and two, uh, his position in the sheriff's office is such that, uh, he is a primary public engagement, uh, official. Um, I also want to be candid though, that I approached Derek in full, you know, consideration. He's also a candidate for sheriff as, as our two other individuals that I know about. Um, but he's somebody I've worked with since I was, you know, congressional staffer and he was working for Larry Kestenbaum. So I, I, I trust Derek to give me some perspective, uh, that informs what he's seen work in the sheriff's office. Um, and what could potentially work in sort of melding these things together. Uh, and that is the, the substance of what we have before us. And Chair, I, I can continue to go on, but I don't know if folks have had a chance to read it at length. But I'm, I'm, I'm happy to explain a little bit more about it, uh, and just wrap up again though with the point. Um, there's no vote tonight. There's no reason that this is the way to go any more than any other way. And the ordinance last time was organically made at this table and in this building. There are provisions in there that reflect what happened in leadership meetings, what happened at, uh, Board of Commissioner meetings, what we heard from residents and voters. Um, there's no right way to do this right. Uh, but I think opening up and, and having that discussion, uh, now is certainly the best way I know. And I, I just closed by reminding folks that, um, we're time limited on the question of if we put something on the ballot. We're not time limited in the same way on the ordinance. Um, and we're not time limited in terms of additional new policy, uh, should we, should we try and do that? So, um, Annie, forgive me for going overly long, but that's sort of the genesis of this document and, uh, kind of go from there.
Thank you, Commissioner Labar. Do you want to talk a little bit about what you drafted and the makeup of the advisory body? Um, maybe for everybody watching in the audience and online, what that looks like?
Sure.
Thanks.
So, points one through six really deal with the reality. This is an odd setup that we are the fiduciary and policy body of this county. Uh, ultimately, it has been the case and will be the case that any village dollars used by Washtenaw County in any context within the sheriff's office, within CMH, uh, within an, any auxiliary effort. It's subject to our approval or lack of approval in terms of budget approval, and it can't run contrary to county policy. But this is special money that the voters have specifically said in their own way as, as policymakers themselves and as fiduciary, uh, a fiduciary group in a, in a more direct way. We are authorizing this tax, uh, on ballot language. And you, you, you must do what you say you'll do in that ballot language. Um, so how do you make that work with this body and then a duly elected sheriff? Um, and make it work in a way that is one, explainable and transparent and two, um, workable in the reality of all these moving parts all at once, including candidly, like a situation with CMH where we are just one funder at that table. So this is a best effort to try and I think reflects some of what we've heard. And so if you look down at section seven, it spells out on a 15-member board. Um, some suggestions in terms of who would be at the table. And I'll just read through those real, real quick, uh, Chair, if that's all right. Uh, up to three members who are primary or secondary consumers of W C S O services. Western Washtenaw Local Unit of Government Representative, Eastern Washtenaw Local Unit of Government Representative, Housing Provider Representative, Substance Use Disorder Provider Representative, Violence Prevention Advocate Group, Washtenaw County Court System Representative, Washtenaw CMH System Representative, Member-at-Large Sheriff. And then I think this is the key part for us. In addition, the county board can appoint up to three ex officio members of that committee, uh, directly. I'd call your attention earlier in the document though, to the suggested nuance in this draft that I think is worth further consideration. This suggests that the sheriff for the creation of the initial committee, so at the start of next year. The sheriff, again, whomever they may be, would suggest to this board for approval, the content of this body. Uh, we have that, uh, ability then to approve or, or not, but subsequent, uh, public safety advisory committees would be, uh, self-appointed and that we would approve on an annual basis. And I think that should give us some concern because self-appointed sounds odd. And I think that should give us some concern because self-appointed sounds odd, and it certainly is. And it sounds less directly apparent. But I would say, think of it a bit different way. If we have a self-appointed body in the future, there is no control by one entity or the other above and beyond sort of what exists now, in a way. And this would be a body with three of us on it. I think it would also divorce some of the content and the folks at this table in the future from the direct political process. And I think candidly could help us make sure that this isn't a rehash of many of our other committees where a lot of really well-intended, active people are at the table, but they tend to be at a lot of tables. I think this could be a way in which we could garner continuous public input from people that live and breathe the consequences of WCSO action or inaction. And so that is, I think, the nuance here that I wanted to sort of call out for everybody because it is an odd duck in terms of what we normally do. But I think if we set that precedent, it could be something where you have some independence between this body, the sheriff, and the substantive discussion that takes place at this committee. I think they would have a little bit more autonomy, not to tell us what we want to hear, but to tell us what we need to. But I, again, Chair, I'd say this is an opening idea and certainly subject to modification.
Thank you. All right. Well, I'm gonna, it looks like people want to comment on that. So I'll start with Commissioner Scott and then Robbie.
Thank you.
Okay.
Also, I'm here. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner, I guess I should address it to the Chair, not to Commissioner LaBarre. But my question is sort of for Commissioner LaBarre and my initial thinking about it. I am remaining, trying to remain open. One of my concerns, however, is that the sheriff can't ask the voters to approve a millage. Only we can ask the voters to approve a millage. The sheriff doesn't have that power. So in some ways, I feel like as a body who's asking voters to oversee or to approve this millage, I feel like I have the responsibility then also to be a good governance of that money as well. And so I'm a little concerned about, I love the idea of an advisory committee on the public safety side as well. I think that's great, but I am not sure about, and I'm just hearing it, right? So I'm sort of percolating. And so my initial percolating thoughts are because of that duty we have in asking voters to do the millage, we should be the ones picking that committee. So I remain a little bit concerned in there, just with the idea of these members chosen by the sheriff and subsequently approved and then self-govern itself in the future. I think that's, the committee is a good step in what people are asking for oversight, but I don't know that that self-governance fully gets to the oversight that we're hearing from the community that they want. Otherwise, I think it's a brilliant idea, and I'll percolate on this idea more, but that's my initial qualms about it. Thank you.
Commissioner LaBarre?
Chair, if I could, Commissioner Scott, respectfully, you should be concerned. I have tried not to personalize this, but it's hard for me not to. In a post-George Floyd America, in an America that is different certainly than it was in 2017 in a number of ways, but yet still remains not up to its potential in many others. Being uncomfortable is probably the best way to do this. And I think, Katie, respectfully, I share the same concern. And I think we should defend to the hilt this body's fiduciary ability and our policy role. The idea here would be not necessarily that this is a self-governing, but rather a committee that self-perpetuates the people at the table in a way that reflects, hopefully, a willingness always to tell us uncomfortable things and to vet some of this stuff more directly. How do we go to our constituents and say, we're doing our financial duty? We're doing our policy duty, and we're doing, above all else, our moral duty to make sure that we're not exacerbating problems with policing and that we're not ignoring things that are rational and relevant, even if they're somewhat new? And so this is an idea of maybe, you know, how to do that. And I think it tries to sort of power-share the dual roles we have as commissioners and as a sheriff would have in terms of, we report to the same folks with different roles, but we are tied together on behalf of our residents based on the outcomes. And Katie, I appreciate this question because I think it's a good chance for me to do a better job saying, again, I wish I'd said at the outset of this millage discussion, every single dollar of the millage gets approved by this board. What I think we can do a better job of, and I certainly personally can do a better job of, is pointing out when we're doing that. I've been very mired in the CMH end for obvious reason. But I can do a better job saying, hey, wait, just FYI. When we approve this annual budget, when we approve these policy modifications, we are essentially enacting the millage into life. And if folks don't want to do it that way, we retain that authority. The only caution I'd say there, though, is for some of these systems, we're not the only ones at that table, and we don't provide all the momentum and inertia of, you know, the policy and the programs they provide. And that's a balance. I don't know the right answer to, Katie, but here is an idea, and let's percolate.
Thank you, Commissioner LaBarre. And then in the queue, we had Commissioner Robbie, then Hodge. Go for it.
Yeah, I'll just do a first round of questions, I guess, and, you know, appreciate Commissioner LaBarre for putting this forward. I just want to reiterate, I guess, something that I've said at previous meetings, and I'll just keep saying it because I really think this is where I'm at and continue to be at. So the first part of what I want to say is, in an ideal world, we would have a new millage that refocuses these dollars on mental health. In the absence of that ability, my number one ask and my number one priority with this ordinance is to make sure that annually, there is a process by which this board has a separate approval of all the millage dollars that are expended for the sheriff, for CMH, and for the local jurisdictions, and that those decisions ultimately come back to this table. There's been talk about the sheriff's millage dollars being in our annual budget process. One of the things I want to remind the board of is, we don't really do line item budgeting, so it's hard for us to actually have a good idea of what's being spent in that millage. We have general line items for the sheriff's office, but we don't really get depth beyond that. I think it's important that we have an annual approval of how those dollars are being spent on a line item basis, both for the sheriff and for CMH and for the locals. That's something that, for me, is sort of a line in the sand that I want to see come to this table on an annual basis. If this is the direction that we want to go with this advisory committee, I'm very open to the idea of having an advisory committee. I'm not opposed to it. As long as ultimately the recommendations are being made to the Board of Commissioners for approval. And a few parts of this give me some pause in terms of the language that's used, particularly the fifth clause, and this is the first time I'm reading this. It was just distributed to us. And actually, before I go into this, I just want to ask, have we distributed this to the members of the public that are here? Could we, do we mind making it available to the public so that they can see what's being proposed?
Chair, good.
Sure.
Commissioner Robbie, just to be overly transparent here, I tried to cobble some of this together about 10 days ago, threw it in a Google document, shared it with Derek for his input, and then I think added Annie on. And the three of us talked a little bit about process last Friday for about an hour. But this document is usable, shareable, viewable, because, again, it's an idea. It's not the only vehicle. So I think that'd be great if we can share it. And I want to apologize. Any delay is probably on my end just because I didn't get it to Ashley literally until tonight. And so I want to apologize about that, but it's all there.
I'm not really even asking for an apology. I don't mind getting things the night of if it's relevant and important for us to work through. I just know that I'm not able to give 100% feedback on it because I haven't had a chance to read through all of it. There's just a few things that jumped out to me. And I guess my other point is, I, you know, I think the public deserves to know kind of what we're talking about.
Sure. So let me just jump in and say, the whole point of this meeting is to talk about the ordinance. And so let's use the next 58 minutes that we have. The other thing, I actually only wanted this printed out for me. I didn't even mean for everybody to get it. I just wanted to be able to talk about it at the table. So it wasn't like intended to be given to all of us and not the public. I wanted to have it to like basically verbally explain what was in this. So it would have been great to publish it earlier, but we're not voting on anything. And it was meant to just be a conversation starter. And so just to be transparent, it wasn't intended to only go to commissioners and not the public. I only wanted a copy for myself, quite frankly. So it's nobody's fault. I just want to make that very clear. And so I get that you're just seeing this for the first time. We're not making any decisions tonight. We're, you know, not making any decisions. We're just having conversation here. So just want to make all that clear.
Okay. Well, let me just jump into my questions then. On, it's not really questions, I guess, but on section five, I do have concern about the language that's being used there. So it says, annually, the advisory committee shall develop and propose a millage investment plan to the sheriff. And then the sheriff will take this plan under advisement and include it as part of the annual millage investment plan to be submitted to the Board of Commissioners for adoption as a component of the BOC's annual budget process. So a few things there for me. First of all, it's interesting that you envision this advisory committee to be basically advisory to the sheriff rather than advisory to the board. Secondly, I think it's, the sheriff will take this plan under advisement and include it as part of the annual millage investment plan to be submitted to the Board of Commissioners. I like that language because it implies that there's a millage investment plan that's going to be submitted to us. The one distinction that I would have is, I do think that it needs to be separate from the budget process because it is an annual submission that is, in my opinion, needs to be more detailed than our annual budget usually is. So that would be my one distinction on that sentence. But the sentence that I probably have the most concern about is this last one that says, it is the annual budgeting process which provides funding for the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office and has ultimate authority for how millage dollars are utilized. I want to understand, does that mean, are you saying that the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office has ultimate authority of how the millage dollars are utilized? Is that what that sentence means?
Chair, if I may? Sorry. No, quite the opposite, that the board has that authority, Yusuf, and that may be a good point to just add in that language directly in that sentence.
Yeah, I think we just need to be clear on that. I appreciate that. And then just another suggestion, I guess, is on the membership makeup. I would say that the units of government that are represented, I assume that these dollars that this advisory committee would be reviewing would be just the dollars that are being spent, that the sheriff's office is spending, not counting the dollars for the local units that are going directly to local units. And if that is the case, I would recommend clarifying that the Western and Eastern Washtenaw local units of government representatives would be units that are contract jurisdictions to the county so that they have a voice at the table there. So I'm going to keep reviewing this as the discussion goes, but those are just some of the things that jumped out to me.
Awesome. Thank you. And then next, we had Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mine's relatively quick. Thank you, Commissioner LaBarre and Commissioner Somerville. And Derek, out there wherever you are, if you're watching. I know it's never easy to put together a document that you're going to have to share, and then people are going to tear apart. So we don't feel like we're tearing it up here. A couple of things I wanted to ask, and this might address some of Commissioner Scott's questions or concerns. Would you feel, is there openness to having the advisory body be appointed by the board as opposed to the initial appointments being done by the sheriff and then it being like self-sustaining after that? I don't know if that, that might address some of Commissioner Scott's concerns and Commissioner Robbie's concerns. That was one item. And then the other one would be, it was mentioned that this would start or take effect next year, assuming that the millage is renewed, but since the millage is still collecting and it would be collecting next year, too, wouldn't it make sense if this were passed to take effect immediately, then immediately create it and start appointing people to it?
Commissioner Scott?
Can we change the ordinance halfway through? Corporation Council?
Yes, you can.
Oh, bonus. Thanks.
Madam Chair, can you answer my questions?
Please, Commissioner LaBarre.
Sure. I am open, I'm open to many things. And I think ultimately, if this body decides to do it more explicitly that way, I understand that. The thinking here was that you have the sheriff recommendation to reflect the sort of dual reality that we're all in the same boat in terms of having roles to play in this. And that would be a body that we would have to approve. And so my thinking there was, if the recommendation is made to us, the ultimate seating authority is ours. But, you know, maybe we can, maybe we can make that change. The one thing I'd say that it's trying to speak to is best I know how is we've got to have a body that lives and breathes with this millage, but also with the reality of what we talk about in the theoretical at this room and then what in any county function actually happens on implementation, you know, out in the world. And I don't know the right way to do that without sort of sharing responsibility for who's at that table. But I'm certainly open to it. And just, Chair, if I could, to the eight of you, let me just say explicitly, I am faking it till I make it on a number of things in this world the best I can. And so I don't have any claim that this is the right sole way to do it. What I would like to do is walk away with an agreement with the nine of us that we think it's worth trying. And so I'm really open to what that looks like. Does that answer?
The first part put the second part around timeline, right? If we were going to do it, or any thoughts, or is that?
That, to me, the sooner the better. Yeah.
That's all I got for now. Thank you.
Cool. I appreciate that, and I think that makes sense. Anyone else on the side of the room care to comment on parts of this, all of it? I think the, probably the, one of the most important pieces are the makeup of the committee. Yeah, anyone? Okay, Commissioner Robbie?
Yeah, back to the makeup of the committee. Just want to clarify what is meant by ex officio.
So in this context, Yusuf, the commissioners would be at the table, but they wouldn't vote at the committee level. The thinking being that they're going to have to vote for approval at this table where it's the final vote. I think also, that's a way to say, we are always in the room, but we're not dictating answers above and beyond this room where we're empowered to do that more directly. And again, that is, that's an idea for how to do this, not a certainty that it's the right way or one of the right ways. But hopefully, you know, we can say it's a balance. So we're always aware and know and ready when our vote comes, but that we're not dictating in a committee something the body as a whole is going to have to approve.
Okay. I mean, my gut kind of tells me that I don't like that it's ex officio and that they should be voting. But at the same time, so I, yeah, I think that's where my gut is on this, just initial thoughts. But ultimately, everything that the committee does is a recommendation under this to the sheriff, who then is recommending it to the board, basically. So it's like a three-step recommendation process.
Yes. And Yusuf, I'm trying to, you and I have talked at some length in terms of that process that you envision annually. And I think I think there's got to be a way to more formally recognize that this body, the annual sign-off on the use of millage dollars that gives us accountability, we can point to, gives us a chance candidly, if we don't agree with it, to vote no. And three, if we do approve it, gives it not just the authority voters have given, but also the policy sign-off And, and three, if we do approve it, gives it not just the authority voters have given, but also the, the policy sign-off of this body explicitly. And so, you know, that, that may be another way where if we can flesh out, what does that look like? Rather than a component of an overall budget process for the county or for CMH specifically, you know, maybe that would give folks more assurance that they're in on all the loops they need to be and can candidly explain the process better than, than it exists right now. Not that it's not good, but it is not, it's not always simple and, and, and clear in terms of when we're doing what. So I'm, I'm, I'm open again to more feedback on that, Yusuf, and particularly in response to some of the, the conversations you and I have had.
Do you want to follow up, Commissioner Robbie? Okay. I'll just flag one thought that I had maybe missing from this list. It might make sense to include somebody from the public health system, especially given like how potential future millage dollars might also overlap with some opioid settlement funding, settlement funding. So that's a recommendation I'd like to make if folks are interested in that. Commissioner Hatch? No?
I was gonna say, I like it. I like, thumbs up. I like it.
Cool. Okay, Commissioner Robbie?
Yeah, so I'm, item eight, where it says the advisory committee shall have the discretion to remove advisory committee members for good cause. I do think that maybe we should define that a little bit more. That's a lot of power to give the advisory committee if they don't like one of their members, even if they were appointed. And, and by the way, I do agree with the chair's suggestion that we appoint them. I think that's important. It's important to me. We could perhaps solicit the sheriff's advice and recommendation of who he or she thinks is the right person for that job or for those positions. But ultimately, I think the board should appoint. And frankly, I think, as with most of our boards, my understanding is that the board has the ability to remove members for non-compliance. And so I think that, that ability should rest with this body, not with the advisory committee.
Good comments there. Commissioner Labar, you care to?
I think that makes good, good sense. I mean, I, I think also what we can say explicitly is you've got to comply with your bylaws or operating with general county practices. So I'm, I'm, I'm with you, with you there. If, if somebody's being less than helpful and not doing what they should, we, we should have that authority.
Okay. Great. Well, while folks are still looking at the, the Labar kind of, I'm going to call it the Labar document. Hey, you did a lot of hard work on this. I guess I don't have a Somerville document, but I do want to include language in the ordinance that calls on the, the fact that housing is, is both a public safety and mental health issue. And I know that we already do spend dollars in that, that area, but I want to put it in the ordinance to help encourage more dollars to be spent specifically on permanent supportive housing. And so I, I don't have anything to throw out, but I would like to hear feedback if, if folks also support that, since we're trying to build consensus here. Otherwise, I won't waste my time. But I think it's important, you know, we know that we save dollars when people have adequate access to housing and supportive services. So saves us money on the whole system. Commissioner Robbie?
As I said earlier, I, in my ideal world, we would have a new millage that focuses the resources on things like that. In the absence of us doing a new millage, I would agree with you that expanding how this pot of money could be used, I think is really important so that it's not just in traditionally, you know, what we think of as law enforcement, but that the dollars can be spent in, you know, in, in other ways as well, like you outlined.
Thank you. And that also brings me to another just point that I wanted to throw out in conversation around how we, at this table and members of the public kind of define law enforcement. Some of the things that I've heard are feedback around how dollars are spent and what is deemed public safety or not. And people have commented on things like sidewalks and bike lanes, but it's my belief that pedestrian safety is also public safety. And so I also would like to call that out in the ordinance as well if folks are interested in that.
I feel like we're, we're erring on the side of oversharing tonight, or at least I am. So I'll try and keep up with that. I don't have a good answer on the municipal part of this equation. And I think the best I can do is say, if we can figure out what the sheriff's component looks like, if we can continue to make work the CMH angle, I think the best I can suggest is that on the municipal spending, we can explicitly put in the ordinance that the county will develop and maintain website and public access to ensure that the total dollars delivered to all those municipalities are trackable to the point where those municipals make their decisions, as is their jurisdiction. I think we could also develop either general best practices and recommendations on what they could use it or annual recommendations on how they could magnify the impact of the millage based on what they spend it with. And Chair, you were at the Ypsilanti City Council table in, in, in previous budget cycles. I, I agree with you. I think Ypsilanti City has put the money to good use in the context that parks matter. Those things matter, especially in the context of public safety. I know other municipalities have asked us to give them some guidance. And I know candidly, others, including one I represent, have had their own thoughts and to their credit, you know, have been clear about that. But if we tell them every year, look, if you added back to this general pool, be it a direct appropriation, you could help us make even better use of that millage and, and go further and further. And at the very least, we can provide our residents a way to say, yep, for the 18 or 19 million dollars this is going to raise, that $5 million is going to seven different spots in these amounts. And if I truly want to get to who are those decision makers, here are the people at those tables. It's the best I can come up with, but I'm, on this one, I'm open to any, any and all ideas.
I want to respond to that a little bit, and then I'll go to Commissioner Robbie. Two things. I did previously serve for a city that received reimbursement because the city of Ypsilanti has their own police department. The thing that I've thought about recently is the, the funding that the city gets, the city of Ypsilanti gets because it's very small. And the way that the breakdown works, it's on, it's based on population. There are, it, it's hard to stand up a robust mental health like program with, with little dollars. I think there's ways for us in the future to try to offer some sort of matching with locals who want to try to do more in the mental health space. But when I was on council and we were looking at the amount that we were given, there wasn't a lot we could do with, with very little. And if anyone, you know, pays attention closely to the city of Ypsilanti, we have a very low tax base. We have a lot of just tough decisions that have to be made every budget cycle because there's not enough to do anything outside of what's required. And so I think for communities like that, or communities that haven't spent any of the money yet because they are not really sure how best to use them, having some ability to make recommendations or offer ways in which county can, and can work together and support something maybe more robust would be great. But I also think having a web, on our website, information very direct on what the dollars are that have been reimbursed, where did they go, where you can track those dollars and how you can participate in that process will help facilitate more public transparency around it. And so I think that's good and public participation. And then I'll stop now. And then Commissioner Robbie, you flagged. And then if anyone else, let me know if you want to get in the queue. Scott, and I'll go Machiaski then, Scott.
Okay, yeah, thanks Chair. So I want to reiterate something that I've said many times before, and I'll say, keep saying it again. But, you know, for the local money, what I have advocated for since the beginning of this millage in 2015, when we started the discussions on this, is that, you know, part of the reason that we wanted to do this millage was to help support local communities in their public safety efforts. So for example, Ypsilanti Township, which has always been a contract jurisdiction with the county, was a point of deep controversy for many, many years about, especially my, my predecessor and myself to a degree, Ann Arbor Commissioners did not like the degree to which the county was subsidizing the Ypsilanti Township Police Services. And there was a whole fight about police service units versus the cost of a police service unit versus the price of a police service unit and how much the county would actually subsidize that. And so part of the genesis for this was to say, we are, we are going to basically ask the voters for help to basically cover the cost of providing those contract units so that, and, and the idea, the reason that we created these, my understanding is, and what I remember, is that the reason that we created these more direct allocations to the communities that did not have their own policing jurisdiction was to offset the fact that the county was basically subsidizing for those contract jurisdictions, but not subsidizing for the jurisdictions that had their own police department. And so one, one of the things that, that I'm hoping to see out of this process and that I've said since 2015, is that what we should have done and what we should be doing is that we should be, the county should be using the dollars that we raise to basically subsidize or provide if we want to continue down this road of doing public safety as part of this millage, that we should be subsidizing or providing services to those non-contract jurisdictions using the county dollars and that that be proportional to the amount that is reserved for them in this budget. For example, as I said back in 2015, and I'll say it again, and it's relevant today too, we have a massive contract with the city of Ann Arbor to provide dispatch. It's close to a million dollars and it's something that they have discretion over about continuing to contract with the county or not. It has been my belief, and it continues to be my belief, that rather than giving them on the one hand, 2.5 million dollars to do with as they wish, and then on the other hand, relying on them to continue contracting with the county, that we should instead be saying to them, we would like to provide this service at no cost to you. You get to keep those dollars and the county will use your portion of the millage money to cover that service. I know that there's been controversy recently about the city of Ann Arbor looking at different options. I think that would be very damaging for our community to do that. As an Ann Arbor resident, I'm saying that. And as a commissioner that represents part of the city, I think one of the issues is that the sheriff's office, you know, it's being asked to provide dispatch beyond just the normal police services. I think they want to find a way to do fire and EMS and maybe even unarmed response. My belief is with this large pot of money that we're giving to the city, why can't we offer to them to provide all of those services through the county sheriff's office instead of giving them this check every year for free money? To me, that makes much more sense for us to do that. And I would like to try to find a way for us to make sense with this money. If we're going to continue doing public safety spends, if we're going to continue having that as part of this millage, then that's the kind of stuff that we should be doing. To me, that makes much more sense. It still frees up that money for the city to be able to do whatever they want with, but it's not county money. It's their money. We're actually providing a service to them and their, you know, and, and that to me would make me much more comfortable because that's more parity with what we're providing for Ypsilanti Township, for example, where we're subsidizing something for their residents. And so the county, in my opinion, should be doing that directly with the city of Ann Arbor and providing that service. If this were to go the wrong way with the city of Ann Arbor and they were to choose to contract with another jurisdiction for dispatch services, that would be a close to million dollar hit to the county sheriff's office and the county general fund on the one hand, minus almost a million dollars. And on the other hand, we'd still be giving them two and a half million dollars. So in my opinion, that would almost be a double hit to the county. Why would we do that when instead we could just provide the service for the city and provide, you know, what they're asking for? I think there's plenty of latitude in that budget and the amount of money to be able to do all those things that the city wants. And frankly, fire is public safety, EMT is public safety, unarmed response is public safety. To me, it all is in that packaging. So I, I, and that's really frankly, my intent with putting forward the idea that we should have more of a say here at this table over how the locals spend their money is because really, I, I don't want to end up in a scenario where we have those services that certain communities are walking away from when we could be providing those services in-house. We made a massive investment when I was on the board before, building out a dispatch center. We put massive amount of county dollars through the sheriff's office. He advocated for it. We approved it. He put money into it. I supported it. And now if we lose our largest municipality from that, to me, that's a big problem. And it's an investment that we all made on behalf of the taxpayers of all of Washtenaw County that then becomes harder to justify.
All right. Thank you for that, Commissioner Robbie. So I feel like that one is not something we're going to be able to solve here at this table based on what I know about our, what we can't do and can do without not being able to put this up for renewal with the way that the reimbursement works of locals. But I do think maybe this is an opportunity for commissioners who represent the city to work with them to get some sort of agreement. And maybe that can come by way of a resolution from their body and a resolution from our body as a way to like form some sort of agreement without messing up the millage language, just offering that as a solution. I see Commissioner Labar wants to respond, and then it sounds like maybe Commissioner Robbie does after that. So I'll stop there.
Yeah, I'd be open to that. Either MOU, resolution, finding some way to, to make that work. I, obviously, Yusuf, Katie and I cannot speak for the Ann Arbor City Council, and I, I am aware of that. The one thing I would say is, Commissioner Robbie, when you say, when you use the term give, my one caution is for as complex and screwed up as the existing language is, it is still the existing language that voters have signed off on. And so I don't know a way around the, the requirement that we fulfill that return rebate, give back, whatever we want to describe it. But it's, it's, it's baked in there and candidly was baked in there in 2017 because we had a bunch of municipalities say to us, don't tell us, show us, give us that written commitment that, that, that voters sign off on. But let's, let's put ideas on the table. Maybe we can work with the, with the city to do that. And if the city's going to use some of this for unarmed response directly, to me, as important as climate change and housing are, that's an easier thing to identify with a mental health and public safety millage to say, Ann, Ann Arbor is putting this to use on unarmed response. So I'm, I'm absolutely open to that.
Yeah, let me jump in there and then I'll pass it off to Commissioner Robbie. The other thing too, the city of Ann Arbor uses some of theirs on housing related needs as well. And so I agree with what's being said. I think there's an opportunity to maybe facilitate some conversations and get some commitments without messing with the current makeup. And then the other thing I'll just say, I think the, the municipal reimbursement part is probably more confusing for voters. And so I think maybe creating more conversation, you know, where we can and get some agreements, maybe by way of resolution or MOU would be great to help kind of show where that goes. Because I think people, until we have this, this idea of a website where you can click and see where all the dollars have been spent, I think it's a better way to kind of show what's happening with it and why. Commissioner Robbie?
Yeah, I just wanted to say like, I'm, I'm open to the idea of doing it through an MOU or a resolution. However, I would like to see that done prior to putting this on the ballot. I think that's key for me because I think we lose some of our ability to, you know, have that conversation if we don't do it before that's put on the ballot. So that's the only thing I would like to say there. And the other thing I want to say too is on some of these other pieces, that's, that's why I'm saying that we should cover services that the city's currently paying for, freeze up money for them. They can spend the money on whatever they want to spend the money on, whatever is the priority of city council. We're not taking away their latitude to spend their dollars how they want to spend them. We're just saying the county money that we're putting on the ballot that taxpayers are voting on, you know, is being spent on offsetting county services or costs that county services have to the city.
My feedback, if I can, would be that I think, you know, this, when we, if we put this up, it'll be for the November ballot. So that leaves plenty of time for people to see that process. And if there's an interest in working out some sort of agreement, I don't want to speak for the three commissioners that represent the city of Ann Arbor, but I think that gives you all the opportunity to start those conversations and maybe make it part of a public process or something. I think it's going to be hard for I think it's going to be hard for us to resolve this specific concern and. You know, it's valid. I just don't think we're going to be able to do that here tonight, but I support. The things that you're highlighting, Commissioner Robbie. All right. Anyone else on this side? Commissioner Macheski, did I skip you? I did. I'm so sorry. I know. And then it went back and forth. I apologize.
Not a problem, Chair. Thank you. Um, just to get back to the, the LeBar document that we're discussing. Um, for my, is it read it for you, read it through a few times at this point, I think. And just, just a few comments to, to throw out there regarding the structure of the committee. Um, you know, I would. I would like to see the, the, a public safety millage advisory committee created by the Board of Commissioners. Um, appointed by the Board of Commissioners. Um, I. Uh. I agree with the ex officio nature of the board members. I think if it's really an advisory committee. Um. That the members of this body should be ex officio, and I think actually the sheriff. Should at most be an ex officio on the body. Um, and possibly consider not even being a member. Um, if this is really a body that's advising the sheriff's office.
Hmm.
Um. But I do think that the sheriff and the sheriff's office. Do need to be um, engaged in the work of the advisory committee. Um, so that, that would be my initial take on, on that piece of it. Um. I think, I think I would like to be open in terms of how people are nominated and brought forward for approval. Um. Uh, uh, to this particular advisory committee, so um, not really wanting to necessarily charge one. Office or body with bringing people forward, but I think having the Board of Commissioners be open to. To nominations for that. I very much like the idea of the. Um, unit, local unit of government representatives being from contracting communities. And giving them a voice in this, in this particular body, I think is important as well. Um. I would like to see any, any. Document, any report produced by this body come directly to the Board of Commissioners. Um, and I think that their work, if it's going to be in, informative and impactful. Needs to be done early on in the budgetary process. Um. And I could, I, so I agree with the comments about forming this as soon as we could. Um, with the anticipa- anticipation of two thousand twenty-five. Um, that they would have the knowledge and the background that they need to have an impactful voice a year from now. Um, on, on these issues, assuming that there is a millage place before the voters and it gets approved. Uh. I think those are the majority of my. Comments about the document itself. I commend Commissioner LeBar for putting this together. And uh, having us pick it apart in the meeting, uh, but uh, I appreciate his work on it and the goals that we're getting at. Um, here, I, I think it would be a, a significant step forward to have a committee like this with the representation as, as it's been laid out. And presented today. So uh, I look forward to continuing to work on it. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Macheski. And again, I apologize. Can't believe I skipped over you. Um. Commissioner Scott, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just let me say, Commissioner Macheski, you're right. I think we would be a little lost. In this discussion if we didn't have the LeBar document. Uh, oh my God, look at him. He, I wish I could, I wish I could control the camera to be like panned to Commissioner LeBar holding his head. Um, but I can't. Uh, I, I guess that I have. It's kind of a larger kind of question for us about what we think this millage does. The millage is a community, mental health and public safety millage. And so is it? Two separate things entirely, or is it community, mental health and how mental health is then addressed through public safety? I mean, if it's two separate entire buckets that have just been. Put together, that changes the discussion, but if we're actually talking about how mental health in, is impacted through public safety. Then I think then that's a, just a kind of theoretical underpinning for us to understand. Um, because if it's, it is, I think then we can think about some of those larger. Buckets of what we're talking about, about public health, about housing. Um, there are so many things. It's limitless, which is a little bit scary, but I also know that we have areas of our county where we don't have. Funding up to par for things that are public safety too. Um. I have been talking a lot um, with our hazmat and TRT teams, which I'm hoping will. I'll be able to talk to Commissioner Somerville about bringing them to the board for a working session. So you can hear what, what they do, but they provide this invaluable service for a community and we have. We don't fund them as much as we should. They fund themselves. Um, this will probably shock you all. A major part of their funding is a golf outing or like bake sales. Like we should not be funding hazmat and tactical rescue teams with bake sales. Um, so if we think about, if I could have a Scott stipulation to the LeBar document. It's that um, we think about how we are funding some public safety services that have been underfunded traditionally. Um, and then also Commissioner LeBar, I'm just, I tried to look at the original ordinance and this one. Um. Oh, it's under, oh, I look at, it was right there in front of me. People were prepared. Um. It looks like in the original ordinance that I'm not looking at on my paper, so hopefully it's the same thing. That jail services and jail service expansion will include mental health and substance abuse assessment and treatment. Inclusive of counseling and psychiatric services and prisoner reentry with a focus on case management. Originally under the CMH services and it looks like. In this document, we're sort of moving that to. Public safety. Or, or maybe moving some of it to public safety. Yeah, that's a question for the Commissioner LeBar.
Commissioner Scott, forgive me. Can you, um, I've got the original ordinance here. Can you, can you tell me a little bit more about where you're seeing that in the, in the, in the new draft?
In the new draft?
In the, in the sheriff version, yes.
Yes, in the new draft, in the sheriff version where you say help incarcerated individuals. Uh, prepare for success once they leave the jail.
Okay.
But private, previously it looks like that was CMH doing that.
So. Uh, good, good question. Let me try and give you my background. Let me give the qualification though that. Um, we, we, we probably have experts here who can give a more substantive answer. One of the challenge at the time in two thousand seventeen was the. Severing of Medicaid that would happen when folks would go into the jail system. Um, now certainly. The challenges in their life didn't go away, but the, the funding stream was screwed up. Um, so that language in the two thousand seventeen ordinance was put under CMH in that, in that context. Um, what this language in the uh, in the updated document that I'll. Refer to as the, the board as a whole's document rather than LeBar document. Um. That is in the context of, of trying to help. Uh, folks not, uh, not go back. Uh, but not necessarily in the context of, of mental health services and mental health services only. But Katie, to be totally honest, I, I defer to, you know, Trish and her team and, and Sheriff Clayton and his team in terms of. Spelling that out with more specificity to some degree that, that is just inarticulate writing on my part.
Okay, if I could, I was gonna say, if I could add the, some of the funding from the sheriff side of it has already, is already being used on um. Reentry. If that helps.
Sure. Um, finally, wow, that new mic. Um. I just wanted to circle back a little bit around to some of the things that Commissioner Robbie was talking about with dispatch. This is, I mean, if. If spend any time talking about hazmat and TRT and talking to firefighters in our community and police, our dispatch is crazy. The things that, that goes to the, that goes to the sheriff and then goes back out to municipalities and we dispatch. Fire different than ambulance, different than police. I think that really one of the things that we could do that would be. Um. Pretty revolutionary for this county is overhaul dispatch entirely. That requires a lot of municipalities coming together. I don't know that it's part of this. If money from this would go to that, it certainly could be part of the eight hundred megahertz, but um, but I think we need to think about dispatch. Um. From the county side and what we can do um, to have multiple dispatch centers and dispatching different things. We could probably um, think about how we aren't mandating people at our county dispatch. For sixteen hour shifts on the regular with something like that. I'm just going to say that and leave that where it is because I know you want to focus on this tonight, but I don't want us to lose the dispatch question.
I think that's a good project for us to work on separately. Commissioner LeBar.
Well, uh, uh, agreed. And Commissioner Scott, I forgive me, I had skipped over the other portion of the question which you asked about. Sort of the, the dual nature in the millage language. Uh, is it a, is it a public safety millage? Is it a mental health millage? Is it, what's the context there? Um, again, this is inarticulate language because I played a role in it. Um. The. For the purposes of using the Washtenaw County Community Mental Health Department to improve the treatment of people. Uh, duh, 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 duh. And for continued law enforcement services provided by the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office. That language back in twenty seventeen was basically to say. Um. These two things are intimately tied together as I, as I, you know, think many people would, would attest to. But we do recognize they are two organs of county government. Uh, that are unto them, unto themselves. And the language there at the, at the. Title of the ballot question, preservation millage. Um, that was an attempt to, to literally say to some degree. That, you know, this is a maintenance of what is. I think one of the things that. I can do a better job talking about is in the context of two thousand seventeen. It was an expansion of sheriff services. It was a question of. If we didn't pay more, we would get less outing contracting jurisdictions because the cost of. Law enforcement had gone up for market reasons that we can't control. Um, so the question was really, if you pay more with this millage, you'll be able to maintain or essentially preserve those levels. Uh, and that's for contracting policing that, that, that doesn't include the things that the sheriff's office does proactively around mental health. Um, but that language there was trying to deal with that reality. Um, and some of the, some of the talk at this table in particular was. What is the sweet spot where you tie these things but recognize their, but recognize their separate nature. Uh, as functions. And so that's. A bit of, a bit of background there.
Commissioner Scott.
Add on, impacts people's mental health. Um. And I, I think that those things are clear. So I think we just have to be. Clear going forward to, I think this advisory committee will help. To talk about how we're using those dollars at that intersection of public safety and mental health.
Commissioner LeBar.
Annie, thank you so much for your patience for me tonight. Uh, Commissioner Scott, spot on. And I think also one thing is. Because these are tied together in the millage language, you can't ignore either one. And I think that. Is something that can give folks who are hesitant to add any additional capacity to policing in this community or in any community. Um, some assurance that uh, because they're tied together, neither can be ignored. And neither can be dealt with without some context related to the other. That's not perfect. Um, but I, I, I think that's important and your, your remarks there just remind me that talking about that. Uh, is, is vital. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Robbie.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, but before I, I'm going to make some follow-up comments, some of the stuff my fellow commissioners said, but. I can't help but uh, continue to get, come back to the idea that as we talk about this, you know, the language. Of the millage. While it, you know. Was eight years ago. Obviously. Supported by the public. Um. Things have changed in eight years and I think that, I, I know that the rest of my colleagues and I'm only one of nine here, but. Uh, that I, I do think that it is worth. After almost a decade, considering how our communities have changed and how. The public and public attitudes have changed, that it is okay. To ask the voters a different question than the one that we've asked them eight, eight, eight years ago now. Um, and I just, on that note, and I know that the chair wants us to focus on the ordinance. But I do want to make sure that in the context of the ordinance discussion that we're also not forgetting. We do have the option of putting a different question on the ballot. Um. And that if we were to do that, there are base, there are several opportunities. For us to get the voters to pass these, this millage if. We go to the voters with a different question and they say no. We would still have an opportunity in two thousand twenty-six to ask a renewal question. Again, we can go back to them. And ask this question if they don't like the other. If we say we just want mental health. And they, and the voters say no, we can go back to them in two thousand twenty-six and not miss a payment because the last levy. Is uh, in December twenty twenty-five. And we would still be able to levy in December twenty twenty-six without missing any county funds. So I just wanted to put that out there. I want to talk about one other thing on this uh, advisory committee. And I want to thank Commissioner Macheski for his comments and agree. With his comment around um, the sheriff. Serving on the committee, especially if the commissioners are not going to serve in a voting capacity. Um, and I agree with his statement about. Um, you know, that the advisory committee should, you know, basically be reporting to the board with a recommendation. On, on this, if I understood what he said correctly. So I, I hundred percent agree with that and I'm glad that he said it. Uh, and would very much support that change to this. Um, one other suggestion that I have too is on the makeup of the committee. You know, I am noticing that there's a lot of um. Sort of what I, what I would say, like. Potentially elected officials and bureaucrats and not a lot of community representation. Um, so that's one thing that I might want to see. Expanded on here, uh, be, you know, because we have. Two government representatives from locals, housing provider, it's probably like a nonprofit executive of some kind. Same with the substance use provider, um, violence prevention, same thing. And then. Courts would be a bureaucrat, CMH would be somebody from our CMH. Uh, you know, system. And then the only one that I see on there is member at large, which I assume is just a member of the public appointed. Um, so either we could expand the number of members at large on there or potentially um. And I'm now seeing that there's this bullet point above that says up to, up to three members. Who are primary or secondary consumers of Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office services. And I don't know if maybe LeBar could explain what is meant by that.
Certainly. Um, I just want to, just so I can keep everybody in the queue. I'm going to let Commissioner LeBar respond and then I'm going to go to Commissioner Beaman after that. Unless you, were you done, Commissioner?
I guess I'll.
No, no, no. If you're not done, I'm going to go back to you, but I just don't want to lose the fact that Commissioner Beaman had her hand up.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so Commissioner LeBar and then back to Robbie.
Yeah, it, um. Youssef, I don't know the right answer in terms of trying to make sure that we don't have. Uh, folks at the table who are at other tables and it, that it's insular. Um, and so I'm, I'm very open to ideas there. The balance I think we should provide is. If you are in opposition to the Millage on principle. You could be on this committee to continually highlight that. But you expected to work towards an outcome. That the sheriff could implement after we approve during the normal budget process. So I think, I think we've, we've got to find a way to make sure that room has. Useful discussions and discussions that matter, but discussions also that want to get to that, that productive outcome. Um. If I was somebody, however, that had grave concerns. I could look at these fifteen spots and say. You could get folks who think like you. Realistically in up to nine of those spots and then in addition. The three ex officio members. And Youssef, what I mean by that really is. Um. There's nothing to stop anybody from advocating to this body. Or to the sheriff directly, who to put on here. Um, I, I think you can view this as a, a mechanism that inhibits action. Or a mechanism that informs. or a mechanism that informs action. But it would be open to folks to advocate directly, put Yusuf on it, put Justin on it. Don't put Andy on it, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever you want. But I'm, I'm open. And if there needs to be an additional member at large, I think, great. The only thing I would ask us explicitly to state somewhere is the goal of the committee is to produce productive advice with the context that it's, that it's going to be put to use, not that it would stop the use of, of millage dollars, if that, if that makes sense, Yusuf.
Yeah, it does. It does make sense. I, I think certainly having more members of the public on there, in my opinion, would not necessarily count as an inhibitor to that process moving forward. And ultimately, you know, as we've discussed earlier, hopefully the board would have the appointing authority over those individuals. But I know it's, I, I have further things I want to say, but is it okay? I don't, I mean, Commissioner Beaman hasn't spoken yet, so I don't want to. I can take a pause.
Take a break. We'll go to Commissioner Beaman.
Fine. Yeah, I don't want to take away from her opportunity.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Commissioner Robbie. Also want to thank Commissioner Labar for, for pulling this together and bringing this forward. And I agree a lot with what's in the document and also with what my peers have said here at the board tonight. The one thing that I need to bring forward as one of few commissioners with multiple municipalities that are not served by local policing is how intrinsically tied public safety and mental health are. I often receive messages from my residents whose only support is from the state police. And that's not to knock any of our state police, but they aren't here. They aren't on the ground. They can't respond the way that a city police can or that our sheriffs can. I see everything from women in situations of abuse that don't, don't know where to turn and don't feel supported to the other end where we're looking at mental health issues with hoarding and blight and townships that don't have real means of enforcement or support to help these people. And so for me, it is very, very hard to pull apart mental health and safety, public safety, because I see it. I see when it's pulled apart. I have cities and they have their own policing. I have townships that contract with the sheriff's office and receive support. But I see the other side where there isn't that person, there isn't that entity that you can call and feel that will respond quickly. Unless it is a very, very dire life and death situation. And I don't like that for my communities. And it does impact the mental health of those residents. I can't even tell you how many residents come to me and say, I didn't know when I bought my house that I didn't have any local police, that there wasn't anybody that could just come and help me. Because it doesn't, not something the realtors boast when selling a property. So for me, when I see what that looks like, when I see the mental health issues that come from feeling unsafe, I can't pull them apart. So that's, that's where I stand when we're looking at this millage and we're looking at this language that they are intrinsically tied. So, sorry, little tangent.
Thanks, Commissioner Beaman. I think the point that you just made, and just to kind of lean on that, we have urban, suburban and rural parts of this county that all nine of us have to make decisions for. And I think when it comes to mental health and public safety, folks in the more rural parts of the county are experiencing issues on a much different level. And yeah, so I just want to highlight that. I do just want to call attention, we've got about three minutes until we hit the regular time that we've done the meeting. I do want to get a few more of the comments that Commissioner Robbie wants to make. Before I do that, I just wanted to also add some of my own comments. You know, at the risk of being too honest, I just want to highlight based on some of the stuff that Commissioner Robbie previously said about, you know, things have changed in eight years, why not do something different? The reality is, again, at the risk of being too honest, based on individual conversations I've had with my peers on the, at this table, there was already enough support to move forward with putting the millage on the ballot without this advisory, without any changes to the ordinance. So I just, I think that's the reality that we're dealing with. A majority of our board wants to move forward with what we already had approved eight years ago. And I guess my goal and desire out of this is to do what we can to make enhancements in the ordinance to improve the process. And it's not to say that things haven't changed. Things have certainly changed. The reality is there's not enough support to put the millage up differently. And so what we can do is make changes to the ordinance. And so again, at the risk of being too honest, I just want to be transparent with the public about that. So Commissioner Robbie.
Thank you, Chair. And I guess that, thank you for the honesty and I, you know, having been in politics for a little bit, I kind of, I know where the winds are blowing, which is why, you know, which is why I'm trying to work on this. And I do appreciate the, you know, that all of you have been willing to listen and have this discussion. I will reiterate something I said last time, which is, you know, I want what's best for this county and I fear that doing, trying what we tried before may not work for the public in the same way that it did last time. And we may get a different result at the ballot box if we are too stubborn and unwilling to listen to what the public is saying. So I do appreciate that we're having this discussion and being iterative with this process. But, you know, I do, I do think that, you know, some of the things that we're hearing from the public are that they want to see us take a different direction and the current language is limiting. And so there's always so much we can do within that. So and, and to what Commissioner Beaman just said, I just, I want to thank, thank you for your advocacy on behalf of your communities and I, I think it's an unfortunate reality that, that there are frankly, communities where people buy a house, like you said, that scenario. And, you know, the realtor doesn't disclose what the reality is. And I think I, I'm just going to say this and you can tell me, you can slam me on the wrist later, but I do think that, you know, it's, there, there are some communities that are more tax averse than others and are unwilling to spend their resources on things like policing and, you know, but at the end of the day, we have a responsibility for people. So I think that's an important balance. But getting back to one of the comments I was making earlier, I was hoping to still get some clarity. I didn't, I don't know if Commissioner Labar really answered this question around what that, the three members who are primary or secondary consumers of services, what does that mean? Does that, is a primary consumer of, first of all, it's kind of like a weird way to say it, I think, like it implies some sort of choice that people have in interacting with the sheriff's office. So does this mean like somebody that's been arrested by the sheriff's office now? I, I guess I'm just wondering. I'm not trying to make light of it, but yeah.
Commissioner Labar.
Yeah. Commissioner Robbie, good, good point is it is intentionally open ended. I don't know of the right way to, to quantify that. So I think it would be something that you could make a lot of roles fit. That, that, that's the intent there. I think Yusuf, in an ideal world, it would be people who have had interactions with the sheriff's office and with the police system generally, whose perspectives we need at that table. And so I, I suspect it would be folks who aren't always in lockstep with, with things in this, in this, in this community, but are, are willing to try and make it work better. But we can add clarity or we can leave it vague and then move on and, and put folks there based on how, you know, how we think at the time.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I, can I chime in? I have a suggestion. I think the more appropriate way to maybe specify that there would be somebody with lived experience who's been impacted by involvement. And that could be because they've actually committed a crime or because they've been a participant in one of the programs that diverts people from having interaction or being in, in, in jail. So there are like many different ways that we could, I think, define that. But there are many folks who have had lived experience that I think would be valid to be at the table. I think that's the appropriate way to explain it probably. Is this related to, can we let Commissioner?
I just had one last comment when he's done.
Well, I was just going to, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to say maybe Commissioner Labar wants to talk more about this, but I think the language and the structure is supposed to mirror the CMH board, the advisory body that way. So maybe that's why some of that language is the same.
Yes, both structurally and to some degree on content, because it, it is using the model we've got for the model on this one.
I almost was going to highlight that too as well. Commissioner Robbie.
That makes sense. But yeah, I like your proposed language. I think we can workshop that a little bit. The last thing I wanted to say again was a comment that Commissioner Labar said, and I just want to put a fine point on something I said earlier. At, at the end of the day, really what I want to make sure that we have is, you know, with this advisory committee, hopefully as Commissioner Matjeski said, that they would report back to our board with a recommendation. And that we would be, we would have the opportunity, I know you said earlier that we would approve the budget as part of our normal budget process. I really believe that we should be having this come up separate from the budget process and that we should have a much more detailed explanation of how these millage dollars are being spent. The budgets that we pass are so high level that we don't get a sense of how these dollars are actually being spent. The sheriff line item is a 31 million, $32 million line item in our budget. And we don't have the kind of specificity on how the millage dollars themselves are being spent. We don't have a millage line item in our budget that even says generally how much those dollars are. I mean, I'm looking at what's on open book right now and what we approved last year. So I just, I really believe that we need to have a separate vote on those millage dollars that is a line item budget. We don't, Tina's not here right now, but we don't usually do, maybe she is in the back, but we don't usually do line item budgets for what we vote on. But for something like this millage where the public is demanding more scrutiny, I think that, I think that it's appropriate to have a more detailed budget, at least program level, what are we funding? How much money is going to this? Similar to the presentation that the sheriff provided to us, but on the front end that we're approving instead of on the backend eight years later of how the money's already been spent.
All right. Thank you for that, Commissioner Robbie. I guess I'm going to chime in and I think maybe Commissioner Labar made it seem like you, Beaman? Okay. I think your points have been heard. I would say that it is up to the nine folks sitting here, whether it's the same nine commissioners in the future or not, it's, you know, it takes the chair or a majority of commissioners, if it's something on the floor or try to pre-plan it to be in, for a meeting. And so we could do that, what you're saying. And I think if I'm picking up on some similar comments made about other millages, you have similar concerns about other millage dollars perhaps. I don't know. I'm just saying that we can do that. So there's nothing preventing us right now from doing that. We can do it. I think it's the will of the board to do that. So that's just my feedback. Commissioner Labar.
Yeah, I agree. And I, I think the, I, I would love to give everybody at this table the assurances they need to be supportive of this millage question and be able to articulate that to voters directly. To that point, Commissioner Robbie, you mentioned the idea of essentially reimagining this with a new ballot question. I think we talked in the past about how constricted we are by Michigan law in terms of what's a renewal and reauthorization and what's a new tax and so forth. The one thing that I would try and highlight here though is in 2019, we were approved for federal CCBHC money, money on, on the CMH end. That carries with it additional reporting requirements that are reflected in the Millage Advisory Committee and federal dollars that are coming in that are dependent on the operation of CMH to, to continue. The millage is not the entirety of that operation, obviously, but it is a, it is a portion of it as are any contracts that we have with outside entities or, or other units of government. So I say all this because I completely understand the desire for a new, a new ballot question. What I would offer though is, for as imperfect as this language may be, I genuinely believe it is worth trying to get it reauthorized with voters with the additional enhancements of the ordinance and of the attention that's paid to it. I wouldn't split mental health and public safety up because more eyes on both of them means more eyes on each of them. And finally, I'd say, if we went out in 2024 and this failed, I think all options would have to be on the table. And Yusuf, I do agree that we would have the levy in 2025 and that would get us through most of 2026. But some of the assurances outside partners and internal partners would need about, is the funding going to be replaced or not? I don't know how to answer that question. And that, you know, that's just the reality of it. So with all of that, I would say my, my hope is that we go the reauthorization route this year and are successful. But if we're not, then we all come back to the drawing board and say, what do we, what do we want to do there? Because I remember, and Trish will tell you this, coming down on election night, I, I went down before the votes closed to my family room to write a statement, I was chair at the time, that said, my fault, too convoluted, it failed. Let's, let's run a single purpose mental health millage. We, we've, we've heard the message. And the damn thing passed. So I, I'm prepared for that outcome. I, I would love to try the reauthorization route first because we'd have those dollars in hands with, with these additional protections in place. That's, that's my take.
All right. Anyone else want to add anything before I ask someone to make a motion to adjourn? All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. We're adjourned.
Twelve minute break. You want to take a 12 minute break? Come back at 7:20. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, okay, seven. All right, I think we're waiting for a couple more people. One more person. Come on in. Just waiting with the whole team here. All right, and go ahead and call us to order. Seven twenty-eight. Not bad, not bad. Working session ran over and we had a lot to discuss. It was a good, it was a good conversation. Call us to order and we're going to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fantastic. All right, Bryce, hit us with a roll call, please.
Commissioner.
Present.
Mr. Hodge.
Present.
Commissioner Labar.
Commissioner Light.
Present.
Commissioner Matczewski.
Here.
Commissioner Rabi.
Commissioner Sanders.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
And Commissioner Somerville.
Here.
All right. Thank you, Bryce. Everybody's here. All right. Before we get into public participation, which we have several people here that I expect that want to participate, which is fantastic. We have a special order of business. We usually do this to recognize people that are receiving some sort of award or honor. And you know who you are, so please join me at the podium. A resolution, I'll read it and then the two of you can say whatever you'd like. And I think one of you might be on the clock, right? Is that, they hear that? Little bit, that's great. So I'll go ahead and start. So whereas emergencies can and do occur at any time throughout Washtenaw County. And whereas the public safety telecommunications of Washtenaw Metro Dispatch have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, rescue of trapped victims, and treatment of injured or ill patients. And whereas each telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their duties over the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners hereby declare the week of April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four through April twentieth, twenty-twenty-four as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Washtenaw County. And be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners join in honoring the public safety telecommunications of Washtenaw Metro Dispatch, who diligently and professionally answer the call to serve and keep healthy Washtenaw County's communities, neighborhood, schools, and businesses safe. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Please.
Well, thank you. I'm RJ Shaw, Dispatch Operations Coordinator for Washtenaw Metro Dispatch as a nine-one-one supervisor. Been in this field for about seventeen years altogether, five here with this agency, and I tell you, um, we really appreciate your support that you give us, not only for this week, but throughout the year. Uh, everything that you do for our organization, not just for Metro Dispatch, but for law enforcement in general, and the sheriff's office, uh, we greatly support, appreciate your support. Uh, we can't do this without our incredible team of professionals that come in each day and do this job, uh, eight, twelve, sixteen hours at a time, expect to turn around and be right back in doing the same thing over again. A lot of sacrifices involved in it, and um, the, the recognition is, is much appreciated, and we, uh, thank you for your support again.
Uh, my name's Cody Benz. I am also a Dispatch Operations Coordinator with the Sheriff's Office, um, one of the supervisors. Uh, I've got about seventeen years of law enforcement experience, uh, last nine of which have been dispatching. I will echo what RJ said, that we truly do appreciate all of your support. Um, can't do it without you guys or any of our other community partners. So, thank you, guys.
All right, you wanna go picture with the guys? Yes. All right, all right. Take a quick picture like we usually do with these, or you hold the thing. That's for you. You share. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to stick around for the rest of the meeting, but you should be excited. Well, stick around, Commissioner White, don't leave this yet. Go ahead. Commissioner Scott, go ahead.
I do have a comment. Thank you, uh, Mr. Benz and Mr. Mr. Schul, right? Schul? Shaw. Okay. Um, I can't read my own writing is what that was. Um, I want to thank you guys. Hopefully you will just, um, express our, um, congratulations and appreciation for the work that you do. Um, my colleagues, many people here know that in my day job, what I would be doing, waking up tomorrow at five-thirty in the morning to do is to go, I'm an ICU nurse in the cardiovascular ICU. So I probably take care of a lot of people you guys see first, um, or talk to first. And I know that your job requires calmness, that you have a lot of trauma that you guys have, that there's probably hopeful things, but it is an extraordinary job that you guys do very well. And so thank you very much for the work that you do and for your colleagues. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else friends? Nope. Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right. All right, now we will move into public participation. So here at Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners Meeting, you get three minutes for public comment. If you're in the room, you will join us at the podium right there. We have a great color-coded system that starts off with green light, goes down to yellow light when you got one minute left. And when it gets to red, I gotta cut you off. You get your three minutes, and that is it per our board rules, unfortunately, so I have to stop you. When you give public comment, please state your name and your city or township that you live in. If you forget to do that, I will remind you to do it. Uh, if you're joining us via Zoom, you will hit the raise hand icon to indicate that you'd like to speak. Same rules apply. State your name, city or township. Somebody's already raising their hand. Uh, you'll be able to state your name. I'll give you your three minutes, and if you go beyond that, we'll have to cut you off. If you're joining us to be a Zoom by the phone, you will hit star nine to raise your hand. Uh, when I call on you, you will state your name, city, or township, and then you will hit star six to unmute yourself. Uh, in addition to the public comment in the space, we also have written public comment that we've all received in the very easily accessible and convenient board portal. So, uh, anybody in the room like to give public comment, come on down.
Hi, I'm Luna. I'm a resident of Ann Arbor, and I work in community-based crisis response in Ypsilanti. I'm glad that the process for the mental health and public safety millage has been slowed down. We live in a very different world than we did in twenty-seventeen when the millage passed. We're more aware now than ever that life-affirming services for mental health care are underfunded, and that policing disproportionately incarcerates, injures, and kills people with mental illness. I urge you to, at minimum, change the ordinance to specify all allocations of funding only go to life-affirming support and diversion efforts for our mentally ill and unhoused neighbors. Or, at best, to create a new millage that separates these funds altogether. To do anything else after the last four years of global reckoning with police violence and the outcomes of the twenty-twenty-three Washtenaw Equity Partnership Report would be an injustice. I've come to every meeting I possibly can since August to speak specifically about the need for shelter and housing for our neighbors. I was grateful for and celebrated the allocation of funding for emergency housing relief in November, but it came much later than needed. I was hopeful that the funding would spare some of our neighbors the experience of eviction this winter. Sadly, those funds still have not been truly accessible to those who need it most. I hope the new, four new HAWK positions are a start at making these funds accessible. Our friends in the unhoused community have come regularly to demand year-round access to shelter, but I hear no movement from this commission toward that goal, nor do I hear creative long-term solutions that would meet the underlying need for permanent affordable housing. I urge you to consider how the mental health and public safety millage changes can be leveraged to address the urgent need for permanent housing and transitional shelter. I work for two organizations that provide crisis services to unhoused and recently unhoused people, including no barrier individual and group therapy to address the trauma experienced during homelessness. I see every day the way that mental health and housing are intricately linked to one another, and how true safety comes from having our basic human needs met. Chronic crisis and economic precarity lead to mental health challenges on their own, but also expose people to traumatic, physical, sexual, and social violence. A significant portion of people stay in abusive relationships due to an inability to afford or access alternative housing. And people who are unhoused are more than four times as likely to experience violence. We need action on these, on mental health and housing now, and I urge you to take that action tonight.
Luna, can you state your city or township? You said where you work, but I need resident.
Oh, I said Ann Arbor.
Okay, Ann Arbor. Sorry, Bryce, you know, you don't want to make this guy mad over here. Uh, thank you. Anybody else for a public comment? And if you're new to these kinds of meetings, we have to listen to everybody. Well, we get to listen to everybody, then we can have an opportunity to respond. We can't go back and forth with you. So that's why we all listen, and then we can respond later. All right, name, city, or township.
Yeah, I'm Monica Williams, uh, Ypsilanti Township, and I wanted to hand these to someone, um, to hand, to the commissioners for my statements from the last time I spoke. So I will begin reading now. What was asked of you, Commissioner Light, was highly justified. Formal retraction of your statements about I, a Washtenaw County taxpayer, small business owner, and former elected official. The date was March twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, or two days after I originally spoke before this body on March twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, which assumed was ignored by you, as I have proof you read the FOIA-related email. What I was speaking about on was the investigative article originally published in the Ann Arbor Independent News and recently MBLive as well regarding the act massive overspending by you, Commissioner Light, along with Commissioners Justin Hodge, Caroline Sanders, and Annie Summerbill, over seven thousand, over the seven thousand dollar travel and expense per diem by this body. In this, and in the board rules passed by this body in January twenty-twenty-three. Commissioner Light, you called me a racist three times after the public comment period, after I had long left during the commissioner comment period. Allow me to correct the record publicly here in front of your face. I am not a racist of any sort of any type for speaking about protecting the public trust and coffers. In fact, I will speak up anytime. These actions are not performed by any elected official, including you. Commissioner Light, you stated that I threaten a Washtenaw County government's employees, family, and young child. As a mother and a grandmother, there are literally no words to express my love or disgust of your slanderous lies about my character and my rep, and reputation. No, Miss Light, in my prepared statement and writing delivered to you again today for you to read and fully digest at the beginning of this public comment period, did I threaten anyone? Nor would I, nor would I ever threaten a county and government's employees, family, or young child. Commissioner Light, you stated what you were not going to tolerate in a vain intent to intimidate I from your seat of power, from speaking as a longstanding taxpayer and citizen in Washtenaw County. The voters of your district, District Two, and all citizens of Washtenaw County need to know that they always have rights to speak truth to power. So to do so is never inappropriate, Miss Light. To ask for their taxpayer revenue to be paid back is never inappropriate, Commissioner Light. As long as these taxpayers pay your upwards of twenty-seven thousand dollars of your stipend to sit in the seat that you do and finance a seven-thousand-hour travel and per, expense per diem account for you, Commissioner Light, from our taxpayer revenue, we, you will tolerate our First Amendment rights to regress grievances before the government that's paid to represent us all. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? Come on down. Be ready with name, city, or township.
Hello, Cindy Bo Davis, Bridgewater Township, um, president of We Rock. Um, I just want to make some brief comments. You all just spent over an hour and a half trying to unconfuse a very confusing set of ballot language. Um, and it seems that there's not, um, a, a desire on the part of most of you to rewrite that language and make it good ballot language and good lawmaking. Conversation for the last hour and a half illustrates everything that's wrong with the way the previous millage language was written. And in addition to that, it's eight years old, and I am a little bit horrified by the fact that we think something written eight years ago is gonna be good eight more years into the future. To say that our world has not changed in sixteen years is really not, not acceptable to many members of the public. And people misunderstood the language because it was so convoluted and the way it was presented, and now they realize what they voted for. And I think you should be just as concerned about the reauthorization not passing as you seem to be about changing things. Uh, or writing new language and putting forward a new, new ballot language. Separating the mental health and, and the safety and the public safety millage, unconfusing the public, and better managing both mental health and public safety seems like an effort worth taking. So thank you very much, and you will hear more from us later. So our group this morning, Allies for a Better Mental Health Language, or Better Mental Health Millage, uh, voted seriously this morning to say we want a rewrite of the millage. That's what we're here to demand. So I just want to make sure you all are aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room for public comment? Or possibly in the hallway? I don't know. I have people out in the hallway. No one else in the room? Okay. Well, I guess we will turn to our friends online. Ashley, do we have anybody online that'd like to give comment?
Yes, Chair. First, we have Reverend Jeffrey Harold.
Reverend Jeffrey Harold, please state your name and city or township.
Uh, good evening. My name is Jeffrey Harold. I'm a resident of Ann Arbor. Um, I passed the New Beginnings Community Church to Washtenaw County, and I'm a member of the Washtenaw Regional Organizing Coalition, otherwise known as We Rock. Um, I want to, um, agree with the words that our President Cindy Bo Davis just, um, um, spoke to the, um, to the commission. A lot of people in our community thought a lot more of the money for the millage was going to actually, um, be applied to mental health. And post-COVID mental health services, um, are desperately needed. Um, our children, um, experience a lot of mental health problems. Um, dealing with the lockdown and what was going on with the pandemic, as have a lot of our citizens. Um, currently, the way that the money is being spent, we would just like to see more of it go to mental health. And I think our citizens thought a lot more of the money was going to mental health, did not realize that only about maybe thirty-eight percent was directly going to mental health services. So I would agree that, um, we probably would do better just to rewrite the millage. Um, I was looking at the, um, report from the Sheriff's Department with a lot of the things that have been accomplished, and it seems like eight more years of funding. In the current, um, um, way the money is, um, allocated, would we could probably do other things with the money. So I would likewise probably just like to see us just rewrite um, and come up with a new millage. We have two years before it expires, and we can get that on the ballot in time. But to move this current millage for sixteen years with the problems that it has in the community, I just don't think will be a good idea. Uh, thank you for listening, and I yield my time.
No, I thank you. Anybody else online?
Uh, yes, Chair. Next, we have Anna Taylor McCants.
Anna Taylor McCants, please state your name and city or township.
Hi, everyone. You guys can hear me, right?
Yes.
All right. I have Anna Taylor McCants. I serve a local nonprofit for wells and shower services to people experiencing homelessness and food insecurity across the county, and I live in Ypsil- I am here, um, speaking about the resolution that you have here and creating for intake positions, um, in OCED's office for HAWK. Um, the reason is this, uh, myself and other community members, other nonprofit leaders, other folks who, um, work in this direct response to people living in crisis. We have said for years, HAWK is understaffed and under-resourced. Um, y'all know that as well, right? I get calls too numerous to count from people who are experiencing homelessness and trauma. They're telling me that HAWK hasn't even answered or responded to them. They have, HAWK hasn't begun their intake process, or HAWK has told them that there's nothing that can be done for five to seven months. We know that this isn't good enough. We know that, um, in order to change these systems, we have to put resources into the system. Now, maybe these positions shouldn't necessarily just be intake positions, right? Maybe we do need to consider, um, what type of coordinated effort these positions can provide. But I think that the county needs to stop relying so much on individuals and like the beloved Sherry Wonder, one of my good friends, um, or other nonprofits in the county, um, is, is willing, uh, to do the work here. And our, that I think you guys are showing that, um, you want to put resources to the, the things that you say you care about, right? Caring for the folks who are, um, on the streets and who are struggling. And so I support, uh, fully funding HAWK because people deserve to have job security. They deserve to have benefits. They deserve to know that they, um, have full-time hours, and it's like, um, um, it takes months to get something, or anything over regularly. Help people in any reason. So I'll-
You're cutting out. You might want to just restate some of the stuff you're saying. You got about a minute left.
Okay, sorry.
No, not really.
Did I lose you?
Yeah, you're still there.
Okay, hold on.
Kind of running out.
Still there, bring up. This is what happens when I leave the working session to go get, uh, food for my children, and I leave and I drive around Ypsil with T-Mobile. Um, I support, uh, rewriting the mental health millage. I support fully funding, uh, and, and fully staffing HAWK to support our people in the community. I support, uh, staff that have job security and benefits and that are to, uh, be gainfully employed. And so, um, please put resources into supporting our community members in crisis by fully funding and supporting, um, HAWK.
Thank you. Can you state your township again? It cut out earlier when you said that.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Ypsilanti Township.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Ashley, anybody else online?
There's no one else online, Chair.
Oh, wow, interesting. Anybody else in the room? Last call for public comment in the room. Oh, 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 someone online.
Yes, Grace Bartley.
Grace Bartley, please state your name and city or township.
Hi, my name is Grace Bartley. I'm live in Ypsilanti Township. Um, wanted to follow up in regards to speaking of the HAWK positions and funding for homelessness services. Just- Just making sure that if HAWK, to make sure that they're funded as well, but also to address funding towards all of the agencies and make sure that it's going to funding not just for the call center, but also for eviction prevention, for shelter resources, for case management, for eviction prevention, all of the different elements of the housing support system.
Thank you. Anybody else? We got another hand.
Yes, Chair. Give me one second here. Next, we have Alicia Dyer.
Alicia Dyer, please state your name and city or township.
Hey, everyone. Alicia Dyer, Sciow Township. I just want to talk about the millage and just make it clear that I have concerns, which I've made public about the Sheriff's Office and the use of their portion of the millage spending. I'm also happy to have continued conversations on this. The fact we have gone this long with no accountability or transparency at the Sheriff's Office level is concerning, and I don't think they should be evolved, be involved in appointing or leading any proposed sheriff millage advisory committee. It should go through the board if that were to happen. But I also want to make it clear, the portion they are getting really does need to be reevaluated. Even if you like our current sheriff and trust him, things and people change over time, and it has become really clear that the sheriff is not held accountable in this county. And honestly, I think a lot of people don't fully understand the Sheriff's Office operations or detailed expenditures. So when the administration asks for more funding from the board or makes a claim, it's hard to increase accountability without having more of that transparency beforehand. I've heard the Sheriff's Administration tell the public, we got training that I, as a deputy, never received, and I worked there full-time. They spent more on rifles, according to their own reports, than they did on We Live, on Shore Moms with the millage money. And I say all this to say, I, I really support reevaluating this and, and doing it right for this time period. And I think that you will find myself, along with many community members, would heavily organize to make sure that a mental health millage was passed in this county. I think the majority of voters would support a mental health millage in this county. And I think reevaluating the Sheriff's Office portion would be not only doable, but it would be winnable. And at the very least, if that is completely off the table, I just want to comment, I was watching the working session, and I do not, under any circumstance, think that it's a sheriff's proposed advisory committee should be led by the Sheriff's Office. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else online?
There's no one else online, Chair.
There's no one else online? Last call for in the room. Otherwise, we will turn to, I'm about to close public comment. I'm closing it. All right, we're closing public comment. All right, back over to Commissioners now. Commissioner responsible for public comment. Anybody want to say anything? Nope. Wow. Okay. Well, not a lot of public comment today. Thanks, everybody, for coming out to give public comment. Your concerns were heard, as well as those of you that submitted written public comment. That's in the record, too, and we all read that. All right, we're going to move right along into liaison reports. Who's got liaison report for me? Commissioner Scott, I know you got one. You don't have, you don't? No, do you have one? Nope.
Sure, I can, I can.
Muster one up. I know, we were at one together.
I will just, well, I will just tell you that the opioid advisory council is underway. We've had a few meetings. It is interesting discussion at the point now, just talking about, like, you know, the systems in which we'd like to see this money work. I'm going back to look at my calendar to see what other things I could tell you about. I think I updated on public health at our last meeting, didn't I? Yeah, maybe. What's that? Yeah, maybe you should go ahead and do that. We, I did, we did do public health at the last meeting. I did do environmental council at the, I updated on the wait, today is the third. Oh, Lord. All right, I'm delirious. Somebody else do it.
Yep. All right, anybody else for liaison reports? Anybody got one? Have one. Commissioner Light?
Commissioner Sanders and I attended the road commission meeting on Tuesday, and so, or was that yesterday? Yeah. And they are, I think someone is going to join us here today, but they hey, hello. So they were just, I just want to commend them and, and say to continue to do the great work that they are doing. And we will, I don't know if we're going to hear from them today about, you know, the millage, but just saying that I support that. So, that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? No. All right. All right, you may have heard the cross-talk between Commissioner Scott and I about Board of Health. So we had a Board of Health meeting. One of the key topics there was about pollution prevention program. So we will be, we have to do a public hearing on that because there's some conversation about changing the fees associated with the pollution prevention program. And whenever we change a regulation, it has to be a public hearing. So look forward to that coming soon. We had spirited discussion around what should the fees be for organizations based on size and the amount of pollution produced or potentially. So look forward to that. It was a good, good conversation. Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Robbie, you got a liaison report?
Well, just a quick piggyback on that. We actually got a presentation from, on that at our environmental council meeting. So, the environmental council was briefed on that proposal and on the recommendation that you guys made.
Well, see, look, look how all the nice pieces of government work together, right? We're there from public health and environmental council, then back to us. It's just, it's a beautiful thing. It is. Okay. Fantastic. Well, we're going to continue right along into special orders of business. I need to make you all aware that originally when the document was, oh, Commissioner Somerville.
I just wanted to add that we do have them in the queue to come to working session. I kind of bumped them, but if we need to reevaluate that bump, we can.
We will talk about it if we need to reevaluate that. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move into special orders of business. We, I have to make you aware that we had to update the special order of business here based on when this was published. Additional information was necessary and added. You can see it if you take a look at Board Portal, that what the changes are. Yeah, so we have to, we have a resolution here to set a public hearing for May first, twenty-twenty-four on the draft, twenty-twenty-four annual action plan. Anybody like to move that? Special order business? Oh, good. For it. Well, thanks. Man, energy feels kind of loaded today, guys. Come on. All right. Any discussion on the special order of business? I, I'm told Mercury is in retrograde, and that is impacting impacting people. But we're trying to make it a great day in Washtenaw County. So let's keep it going. No discussion on it. Bryce, you want to roll call us on this one?
Commissioner Hutch.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar. Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Great. Please join us on May first for the public hearing. And to remind everyone, sorry, that was a loud gavel bang there. Remember, you got to turn your mic on, otherwise your friends at home can't hear you. All right, we'll move on to appointments. Would anybody like to move the appointments? Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, pull any for separate consideration? Any discussion? Commissioner Somerville?
I just want to congratulate, well, hopefully congratulate our friends in the audience, Andrea and Lauren, for being appointed. They're here, and I was happy to see their faces.
Yeah, assuming they are appointed, they will, I have invited them to come speak at the podium, assuming it pleases the board to appoint them. So any other comments before we vote on it? Nope, nope. All right, Bryce?
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Light. Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutch.
Yes. All right, appointments passed. Great. Anybody that was just appointed, if you'd like to come say a few things at the podium, you're welcome to.
Hi, my name is Lawrence Sargent. I'm very happy to be appointed to this council because it's something I've cared about my entire adult life. So this is age before beauty, because I'm older than my friend Andrea. And I look forward to serving this body and this community to bring us into the twenty-first century energy and environmental balance that we all require. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to adjust it. How's that?
That's good.
Okay. Hello there. Take that off. Hello there, everybody. I'm Andrea Pierce, Washtenaw De Quay indigenous acost from Ipsy Township, okay? I'm an indigenous water protector, and I've often come here to talk about the water. I've talked about pipelines and water affordability bills, anything usually that relates to the water. And I'm really excited to be a part of the environmental council, especially as representing water protection. It really does, I'm just excited. So I really want to say thank you. Me Gwich, thank you, everybody, for trusting me with Washtenaw County's water protection. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your interest and your willingness to serve Washtenaw County. I'll get you a second. Anybody from Remontia Mental Peer Review Group want to come? Say anything? Remontiation, apologies. No, all right. Well, Commissioner Robbie, go ahead.
Well, remontiation is very important, so, but I just wanted to comment briefly. I wanted to save my comments till after we'd actually appointed them, but I want to thank Lauren and Andrea for being here tonight and for their willingness to serve on the environmental council. I met both of them many, many years ago, and we've been through many, many, many fights together shoulder to shoulder, pushing for strong environmental policy at the state, at the county, and beyond. And I just, you know, I, I will always remember the time that we spent together at the Straits of Mackinac, fighting to shut down Line Five and so many other experiences that we've shared together, including pushing for public power. And to think that the two of you will be joining us on the environmental council, it just gives me great joy that, that you have been willing to sign yourselves up for this, and I'm very much looking forward to the work that both of you are going to do and the voices that you're going to bring to the table. I feel like, I feel like our planet is so much better just because the two of you are fighting the good fight and not giving up every day and every morning that you wake up. So keep it up, and I'm looking forward to working with you in this new capacity.
Fantastic. Very excited to have both of you on the team. Any other comments? Nope. All right, well, look at us. This is unusually swift. We're moving to the consent agenda. Nothing nothing spicy here, no communications, no spicy communications. I guess we're going to have to start sending some, Commissioner Scott. Very few communications, really. So I'd look for somebody to move the consent agenda. Is there a second? Any pull, any? No, any discussion? Nope. Was a voice vote all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passed. All right. Now we'll get to the meet of the meeting here, resolutions. So would somebody like to move the first reading resolutions? Commissioner Scott is pointing at Commissioner Labar. Commissioner Labar accepts. Commissioner Labar, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move resolutions under the first reading. A, the resolution accepting the weatherization program grant for O C E D. And then B, resolution authorizing the grant application for brownfield activities for the three-hundred North Zeeb location.
Great. Is there a second? Okay. Pull any for separate consideration? None. Discussion? Want to discuss any of these first reading items? We don't want to discuss them. Okay. All right, well, it's a voice vote because it's a first read. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, first reading items passed. Let's go, I'd look for somebody to move the final reading, the single reading and claims. Anybody want to do that? Commissioner Scott, taking this, taking this one for the team. It's a lot of reading here.
I tried to make eye contact with Labar, but he didn't look up. Um, I'd like to move the final reading resolutions, a resolution placing the restoration and renewal of the roads and non-motorized millage on the August sixth, twenty-twenty-four primary ballot. B, a resolution placing the restoration and renewal of the Conservation District Millage on the August sixth, twenty-twenty-four primary ballot. C, a resolution placing the renewal and restoration of the parks, acquisition, development, and operating millage on the August sixth, twenty-twenty-four ballot. D, a resolution placing the restoration and renewal of the enhanced emergency communication system eight-hundred megahertz millage on the November fifth, twenty-twenty-four general election ballot. E, a resolution placing the restoration and renewal of the Veterans Millage on the November fifth, twenty-twenty, twenty, twenty-four general election ballot. The single reading resolutions, A, a resolution creating four F T E intake operator positions in the Office of Community and Economic Development. B, a resolution authorizing the above midpoint hire of Sophia Curry as an assistant prosecuting attorney from administration. C, a resolution proclaiming the week of April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. D, a resolution proclaiming April twenty-twenty-four as Celebrate Diversity Month in Washtenaw County. E, a resolution celebrating Earth Day. F, a resolution celebrating April seventh as World Health Day. And finally, Section four A, approval of claims through March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
All right, well, I'm going to ask somebody to support it, please. Thank you. All right, I'm going to let Michelle and Bryce get ready to figure out which ones are going to be pulled for separate consideration, because there will be some, I think. Anybody want to pull any for separate consideration? Commissioner Labar?
Chair, if I could, I'd like to pull three A.
Yep. Any others? No other ones? All right, well, it's millage madness time. Any discussion? We'll go ahead and, let's get all the other ones out of the way. Any discussion on that large chunk of them? Yeah, Commissioner Robbie?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I, I just want to say, reiterate something I said last time, which is, I really do believe that you know, with all of these millages, that we really need strong reporting. As I talked about with the previous millage discussion that we had at working session. But with all of these millages, I think we need strong reporting to the Board of Commissioners on an annual basis. We need to know how these dollars are being spent on a line item basis, especially for the dollars that are going to external organizations. I have been in discussions with administration and the chair over ways that we can require this through our resolution process and other avenues that are potentially at our disposal. And so I am going to be comfortable voting on these today with the expectation that we will have a fut- future conversation on basically passing, supporting resolutions for each of these millages to, you know, guide the expectation that we will get annual reporting on the, how the money is planning to be spent and how the money was actually spent. And then with the roads millage in particular, just basically codifying some of the things that the road commission is already doing. But more importantly, making sure that our local community partners that are doing road projects are also, you know, doing that and reporting to us on what those projects are, which at times has been, you know, better than others, but I hope that we can create something more streamlined and uniform so that we're just expecting and we're seeing the same thing from all of our millage-funded projects and entities. So I will be supporting all these with the expectation that we have a vote at the next meeting on a resolution or a series of resolutions that would outline some of that.
All right, I think we had a very positive conversation about resolutions. Yeah, nods and affirmative there. Okay, any other comments? All right. Well, Bryce, let's roll call it. Oh, wait. Do our friends from the racial equity office want to say anything about the items that they put on the agenda? I didn't tell them ahead of time that I was going to ask them, but they should know. Tammy, Akeem? There we go. All right. Yes, you were ready. You knew.
Hi, Commissioners. So for this month out of the racial equity office, we have three resolutions. The first one is Celebrate Diversity Month. The second one is Earth Day, and the third one was for the World Health Day. So we really hope you guys like these resolutions. We have more coming in the future months, but this is what we wanted to kind of put on the spotlight for this month.
Open to add to it, along with the resolution that we'll be doing, we will also be having some community facing, and also we'd like to welcome you all to a learning series we're going to call Launch and Learn, where not only do we acknowledge and give space, but also hold space for education amongst ourselves and also with the community as well.
Very nice. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now Bryce, go ahead. Let's roll call it.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar. Thanks, Chair.
All right. Vast majority of resolutions approved. Look at us. This is great. All right. So now we're gonna move into the one item that was pulled, which is the final item here. Uh, and that's three A, a resolution creating four. F, uh, full-time intake operator positions in the office of community economic development. We have frequently talked about this as Hawk. Uh, this is something that we've talked about at the board table quite a bit over the last, I'd say, year plus. Uh, this came, this has come out of conversations the board has had around wanting to uh, bolster. Hawk and make sure that we're stabilizing the system, particularly in the area within Hawk that we have responsibility for. Uh, I'm very supportive of us creating these positions. We've had temporary staff running staffing these, which is, creates a number of challenges for them. This would transition into full-time staff that would be permanent uh, and union spots as well. So uh, I'm excited for us to be able to do that and take greater responsibility for our role in maintaining that portion of the C O C system. But let's talk about it. Let's talk about it. Anybody got? You know, they want to say Commissioner Labar, go ahead. What you got?
Thanks, Chair. Uh, just a quick procedural question. I, I'd like to vote for this tonight, but would like to move it to first reading. Rather than uh, put it through it in, in, in one uh, meeting and corp counsel. Is there a way to be able to do that uh, that aligns with uh, with war rules?
You would simply make a motion to have it split over two readings.
Okay. Uh, Chair, for consideration uh, for this discussion. Uh, I'm happy to make such a motion. I predict there'll be some question about why and so forth. Do you want me to give that upfront now, or do you want me to make the motion and then proceed down that route?
Either way, if you're gonna do the motion, go ahead and just do your thing.
I'd, I'd, I'd move to, to split consideration and would welcome a second in order to have a little more discussion. Thanks. Um, I think this is a good answer, but I think it's part of a broader answer. Um. If we make this uh, approval tonight. Uh, we are answering the question of who is gonna staff uh, the intake center. Uh, but there's still a number of questions that hang out uh, in terms of the overall system and the system for which we have uh, chief responsibility. This allocates uh, three hundred out of the four hundred thousand structural uh, dollars that, that we have set aside for these endeavors. Um, I think that's a big enough amount that we ought to get some feedback from the continuum of care. Uh, right now, there's a disparity, I think, uh, in terms of what I've heard from county administration. And what I've heard from those continuum of care members in terms of what is the net impact on this? Think everybody recognizes we need folks answering the phone and that those should be county employees. Uh, I certainly welcome the addition of union employees. I think, however, it then asks, if we have those positions staffed, what resources are we plugging them into? And do we have those resources at hand? I think it also asks, though, um, are we fully aware of what the impacts are of this funding decision? Uh, on the rest of the system? And we have in our memo here a reference to one point two million dollars structurally going forward. That's really only one hundred thousand dollars of truly structural uh, funding. It's one point one million on a four-year basis, but that goes away at the end of the four years. If we could get two additional weeks, we could get some additional impact. Uh, from the C O C members and everybody at this broader table. But how this fits in and if we go forward with it, what that will do and, and what it won't do and will remain uh, you know, needing to be done. And so that's why I'd, I'd hope uh, we could move it through uh, tonight for first reading. Uh, and then have that time and take it up again in uh, in two weeks.
All right. So I saw Commissioner Robbie. Scott, did you raise your hand? Not, not yet? No, then it's gonna be Commissioner Somerville. I would just say now, okay, we are discussing the motion to turn this into a. Two reading item as opposed to a one reading item. Uh, we'll dispense with that at some point, and then I'm gonna have Tony come up once we have. Resolved this motion to provide more context. I'm not gonna do it now because that's not what we're talking about. Now we're talking about this procedural motion. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Robbie.
Um, what, so. I, I have to be honest with you. I don't really like the idea of single reading anyways. Like, I've never really liked us doing single reading items. Uh. I understand that there are some items that need to get done, you know, on short order. Um, why was this added to single reading to begin with? Like, what's the, what's the rationale for single reading?
Yeah, the rationale for single reading on this one is that those employees have essentially been in limbo all this time, serving as temps. And because based on conversations at the board table and direction to administration, that this is something that we have talked about wanting to do. We want to move it, move it along and be able to work and put those employees in a better position.
Okay.
If that is not correct, Tony or, uh, I, they are saying it is correct?
I can't see Tony not.
Tony, come on down and I think you're gonna say it's correct, but you know, let's see.
Um, yes, but it will also be an open posting uh, for union employees. And so it's not just specifically the, those employees who hold the position, who are eligible to apply. Um, so i- it is also an equity situation. Uh, and I did want to clarify that it's not just for intake operator positions. That in reality, two of the positions, though they are backup intake operators, have other duties as well. One is the court liaison specialist who attends the eviction court hearings with the three judges. Uh, to be able sort of to be the last line of defense for somebody who is about to be evicted in the court proceeding. Of being able to potentially offer barrier busters funding or some other uh, assistance to stop them from being evicted. Which, as we all know, the diversionary dollars are much cheaper and less traumatic for the family in the situation if it's stopped before the actual eviction. Uh, and that person also handles the housing choice vouchers. Uh, and then the secondary position uh, that is also a backup intake operator is the H M I S specialist. Uh, which is the system in the homelessness uh, process where data is entered and the accuracy of it. And the opportunity for the various organizations involved in the C O C to access that H M I S uh, data. So I did want to clarify that it's not just for purely uh, intake operator positions.
Excellent. Thank you. You may as well stay there because you know, unless you want to sit down and come back up.
So uh, so, okay, thank you. Uh, I don't have any further questions for you, Tony, but I guess. My, the, the conflict that I'm having with this, this vote is that. While I generally disagree with the idea of single reading. It has been the practice of this board to do single readings. And we just approved a single reading for a above mid-grade higher. Uh, so it feels to me like. I want this to happen. I'm going to vote yes on it. I want it to happen now. And while I disagree with the general premise of doing single readings. And I think Chair, that we need to be more diligent with the items that we put on single reading. I don't know why we even had this mid-grade higher on there. I, I just, I think we should be very diligent about limiting single reading items to actual emergencies. Uh, but since it's been the past practice of this board to, to have items like this on single reading. I don't know that I can vote for this motion because this, in my opinion, does need to get funded. And I, I don't, I don't fully understand the rationale for why it's being singled out when we just approved another. You know, pretty much routine uh, item that. You know, we are doing, we did single reading on, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Somerville.
I'm not, it's kind of related to both either this motion or. The whole item, so I guess I'll just talk now. Um. My concerns, I think we need this, and I'm gonna vote yes on it. But the concern I have, and I was gonna talk about this during Commissioner follow-up, but decided to save it. You know, there are comments made that this is gonna. There are comments made about the wait times and us funding these physicians is not gonna resolve. The wait times that we hear, especially for family homelessness, because the reality is. We can, we can fully staff Hawk, which I think we need to do. We could staff up our, our um. Partners that do the other parts of the, that help complete the other parts of the system for Hawk, which is S O S and the Shelter Association. The wait periods that people often complain about, that we hear about a lot. It's because once you become homeless and you go through the assessment process, there's literally nowhere for families to go. And so I just want to like, call that out, like, we're taking money. Out of a bucket that we approved in the budget process for the next four years ongoing, and I know that we have some non-structural dollars as well. I made an amendment during the budget process to increase the four hundred thousand amount up to a million, which didn't happen because we funded a bunch of other things that. Um, were priorities of commissioners and community members, but. It still leaves us where we're taking money away from that and where, where are we replenishing it from? I know I've had, I've had conversations with the chair. And gotten a commitment that we'll figure it out, and I guess I'm just like, I want to just say that here publicly, like. We need to figure it out, and I know I'm gonna make every effort that I can to figure out where to move money around. Um, because having people there to answer the phone and assess people more quickly is great. It's not great if we don't have places for them to go. It's not great if we don't have funds to prevent the eviction. And then what happens when people, um, the way barrier busters works, there's like restrictions and. Like one-time use versus not, and I think we need to take a look at how that system functions. If we're using G F dollars, they're not limited to the same rules that we've been, you know, operating under with barrier busters in the past. So there's just big system changes that need to happen, and I just want to like, we need to talk about it more because it's not, I, I think. We just need to be honest about what this does. It does. It completes a piece of the puzzle for the overall system, but the reality is we need more money to prevent the evictions from happening in the first place. But we also need more places for people to go as. Family homelessness is obviously our biggest challenge. Um, and it's very hard to rehouse families. Um, and so I just, you know, it's, I'm conflicted with this, but I also know that I have a commitment from some of my colleagues to do the work that we need to do to find. Replenish the resources and, and even beyond what we approved in the budget process that we just went through because four hundred thousand a year is not enough. When we look at general fund dollars that we spend on housing and homelessness, it's not even one percent of our overall budget. And I think it's just something that we need to work on, so um, that's all I have for now.
All right. Before I get to round two with Commissioner Robbie, I'm gonna, anybody else? Otherwise, I'm gonna hit Commissioner Labar. I'm gonna hit you, Commissioner Labar. You're hit.
Thank you, Chair. Um. Take two weeks, not to take my opinion on it, but to get input from community of care, uh, continuum of care members. Um, this is a good answer, but it's only a partial answer, and it's probably the most timely. But if we were saying in the same resolution that we're back funding the three hundred thousand dollars that we're allocating tonight as structural dollars. Uh, I'd, I'd have a different answer on this. I'd say let's, let's go for it. Just get a little input from everybody else in the system in terms of what are the anticipated impacts of this and what is it gonna leave undone? Because we may be in a position where with that information, we're more comfortable doing it and get it done. If not, though, we don't have to unpack that decision and try and backfill the, sort of the new hole we've created or the hole we've left unfilled. And I'd be lying if I thought anybody in any room ha- has a comprehensive understanding of the, of the continuum of care. Of the Hawk system, of all of these uh, from start to finish at, at all levels. So I, I have certainly benefited from getting that additional input and would say, we can use that two weeks to, to, to get it. Um, it still keeps us on a path to approve this. Still keeps us on a path where we're gonna have bodies in those roles, which I think we need. Um, but it's gonna make a more informed decision for all of us, because I suspect what will happen is, we pass it through tonight. We will come back in the next quarter or half year and figure out, hey, we need to do more. Where do we have to do? You know, where do we have to look to get that? I, I'd like to give us just a little more time to get that right on the front end. Thanks, Chair.
Yeah. Commissioner Scott.
I wasn't sure if that, yeah, it was a, but go ahead for me. Thank you, Chair. Um. To, to these comments and to these positions, I, I think I've been asking for us to do this. And I'm just gonna kind of reiterate this call for us to put this R F P out there. We really need to map the universe. We need to map the system. We want to put more money towards housing and homelessness, but we do not have a good sense of where the system lays in entirety right now. In this post-COVID world, and so um, I think Commissioner Labar makes some good arguments for waiting two weeks. I think Commissioner Somerville makes some good arguments for, for um, looking in our budget where we can do more with this. Um, I know some of us have been meeting with members of the unhoused community. I met um, with some this morning. There are some good ideas out there, but we need this mapping project to get underway. And we need that R F P to get out there, so this is just once again, my appeal to administration to, to try to start to get this R F P process. For somebody who can help us do this mapping project. So we can see the system as it exists, and then we will know effective places to funnel our money. Thank you.
To respond to that, I'd say that we've had conversations about the mapping project quite a bit over time, and we, we had hoped to allocate dollars to do it before. I'd say that program evaluation group has, who has been doing some of the work with O C E D is interested in doing that. Uh, and we could explore, and they're already doing part of that work now, so we could explore with them just expanding it and getting that going. And I see uh, Andrew is furiously taking notes over here.
Can I just add then, I mean, this is like an idea I had, so I'd like to be included in those conversations if they're happening. And it's also something I really envisioned major community involvement with. And so I think having an R F P process to do this um, is probably helpful for us. Thanks.
Okay. All right. I'm trying to, okay, you just spoke, but he wants to talk again. He's only talked one time so far, so I'm gonna give it to Commissioner Robbie and then to Commissioner Somerville. Sorry. It's gotta be fair.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I guess, um, and maybe some of my colleagues can help answer this, but I, I'm having really trouble understanding how the weighing this. Helps with all of what's being said, like, I, I understand we have all these big problems that we have to solve, but. How is waiting two more weeks on this gonna help us solve that? Like, can't we just still have that discussion in two weeks and pass this tonight? I, I'm having trouble understanding how the two are related. Are, are we trying to use some of the resources from this to solve other problems?
I, I'm not sure if you, are you wanting a direct response?
If one is available, yeah, that's.
I believe a direct response may be available from Commissioner Labar.
Commissioner Robbie, to, to, to your point, I, I think that's possibility. Um, I think this is a lot more complex than uh, is, is easily under uh, understandable in the context of the board resolution. Um, and I would encourage folks to, to reach out to continuum of care members to get that feedback. I'm by no means any expert in this. Um, I asked uh, administrative staff to send that uh, to the C O C, which Andrew, I appreciate, you know, you doing to garner some feedback. And I've had some useful feedback from folks like Jennifer Hall and Amanda Carlisle and others. I, I think this is a good answer. What I don't know, though, is. Is it enough of a right answer and is it the most pressing answer in the context of everything else we've got to do? If it is, then doing it formally in two weeks would mean we've taken that additional time to get that additional context. If we do it all in one night, I think we're gonna find ourselves back sooner or later. In a question of how do we backfill where that three hundred thousand went because we need more. And that's what I'd like to try and avoid with a little more time if, if, if possible.
I, I hear that argument. My, my position on it continues to be that we gotta stabilize the Hawk system, particularly for the area that we're directly responsible for. And this is a portion of it that we are directly responsible for. So uh.
So I just want to conclude my.
Conclude remarks, please.
Uh, with saying uh, with appreciation to uh, Commissioner Labar for bringing these thoughts forward and to the chair for. You know, helping to push this item along, and I just, I want to say that I'm planning to vote no on the motion because I think we should pass this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Light hasn't spoken yet, Commissioner Somerville, and then Commissioner Sanders hasn't spoken yet. Somebody hit Light, Sanders, and then Somerville on. Yes, unless somebody that hasn't spoken yet. And then, and then you, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Light.
Um, I just wanted to agree with Commissioner Robbie that I don't think that waiting is going to make a difference. Um, and we are always going to need more money for um, our, our homeless and eviction prevention. Um, but by us stabilizing um, those positions, it will begin the process. Um, and as Commissioner Scott said, we need to begin the mapping, um, just like we allocated those funds back in November. However, there was not a plan to come along with it, so we have to be um, more diligent with how we bring resolutions to the table. Um, without a plan, and so, um, but I'm, I'm with Commissioner Robbie. Uh, waiting two weeks is not gonna make a difference.
All right, Commissioner Sanders.
Um. Well, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on the limb that I'm already on since.
Well, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on the limb that I'm already on since, since I'm, I'm out there for traveling to get information on housing and homelessness. We have been kicking this can down the road uh, since 2021, which is when I came on the board. And I don't think that two additional weeks is necessary, nor do I think is prudent. We've been having very long meetings about the needs of the housing insecure and the homeless people since last fall. I even, I don't even like to say the name HAWK. I want to say this publicly. We need a name change. It has too many negative connotations that come with it. And with all due respect to, um, the continuum of care, I'm not certain. I don't know what their input has to do with the county's responsibility to finally own the fact that we need to do and we need to have stabilized employees that we can hold accountable, not have to go through a third party in order to make sure that we are serving, um, the residents that are in need. So pushing it down the road to ask, um, and external partners or external partners' opinions about what we should be doing, we've had plenty of time to do that. Why we haven't done it, I'm not sure. But call to question. I'm voting yes, um, on approving these positions. I think that it's an opportunity for our current employees to be able to bid. And I, I wanted to ask, um, Director Kuyumi, I wanted to clarify that the union, the current union members, the current employees of the county have first rights for these positions.
That is correct.
Okay, so, I'm just putting my former UAW hat on. First rights. They have the first opportunity to apply for these positions for promotions or for a change of scenery or whatever it is that they need to do. The temporary employees do not get first rights because they're temporary employees. And so this is an opportunity even at the risk of not trying to poach from our nonprofits, but it's an opportunity for those employees as well to apply for a job that likely is going to provide a little bit more stability to them, especially if they already have the experience to do this work. So all around, it's an opportunity. I don't support dragging it out another two weeks.
Commissioner Sanders, did you, are you formally calling to question? Are you formally trying to make a motion to call to question? Or you, you said those words, so I have to clarify.
I feel like I, I don't want to silence. Um, there's two other commissioners I think that still have something that they want to say, so I'll let them say what they have to say.
All right, letting the slide. All right, go ahead, Commissioner Somerville.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to, um, Commissioner Scott's point, um, about mapping the system. The University of Michigan Poverty Solutions is doing that currently, and I think we'll have that information relatively soon. Um, and I hope to bring them to a working session to present, um, what they've gathered since last summer.
All right, Commissioner Scott.
Can I just clarify, um, the, the, did I hear you say these positions definitely are for HAWK? Or that they might for the intake positions or they might be moved around?
So they are four positions related to the OCED call center. Two of them are primarily intake operators of the call syst-, uh, call center.
Yeah.
One other one is a backup intake operator, but is the HMI specialist. The second one is a backup intake operator, but is the court liaison specialist. All four are part of the call center team.
And they're, they're all identified in our cover letter, just as intake operator?
Yes.
And I don't know, Brady, can you clarify as to why?
So that they're all identified as intake operators because they're all going, the idea is to have them cross-trained so that we're not going to have person-dependent or, or, um, position-dependent, uh, positions. So that if one person goes on leave or one person leaves the county, that we then have a deficit in that position that someone else can step in and fill that position or fill that role while that person is on a vacation, on a leave, or while we're searching to fill a, a position if someone does leave the county.
Okay. Um, thank you. Thank you for allowing that question. I know it didn't speak to the motion, but it sort of made me wonder about if I needed, if we needed more time to consider that, that they're all called intake operators, but maybe they're not all necessarily intake operators. But now what I'm hearing is they're all intake operators. They'll just be doing.
Additional duties.
Additional duties. But they're all the same, they're all the same job, all the same pay, all the same grade, et cetera. Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Not seeing any, okay, so I, to restate the motion, we are about to vote on Commissioner LaBarre's motion to turn this into a two reading item. So you, what you do is you vote yes if you want this to be two readings instead of a single read. You vote no if you want to go back and consider this as a single read item. Got it? Any questions? No questions. Okay, Bryce, go ahead.
Commissioner Machieski.
No.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
No.
Commissioner Scott.
No.
Commissioner Somerville.
No.
Commissioner Beaman.
No.
Commissioner Hodge.
No.
Commissioner LaBarre.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. All right. Back to discussion of, uh, the creation of the positions for a single read. Tony, did you want to say anymore? Uh, friends, do we have any questions? Commissioner LaBarre, go ahead.
Next, Chair. Director Kuyumi, can you walk us through, um, what the total FTE count will be then in the intake center? And walk us through, uh, what communication has taken place with the other two entities within, uh, HAWK specifically, uh, Shelter and, and SOS in terms of why we're making this decision at this moment? And what impacts we think that'll have on their work within that system?
So related to the FTEs, it is a total of eight. The supervisor and the three initial intake operators from the first resolution that the board passed the couple of months ago. And then this one, which would have four FTEs, which are the HMI specialist, court liaison specialist, who are both backup intake operators, and then the two intake operators. Related to conversations, SOS has, uh, frequently shared that they are also in need of additional, uh, funding dollars on top of the funding that they received, um, from the HHII allocations. And we have a meeting scheduled with them and administration coming up in the very near future to discuss some of their operational challenges. As far as SOC balanis, everything is going swimmingly, uh, reported by Dan Kelly. Um, and that, uh, we're moving along fine with the, uh, winter extension, uh, as far as the warming and sheltering, uh, for an additional month. Um, and that's also going smoothly.
Chair, my desire tonight was not to make this a, a, a broader public discussion. Um, I'd hope to be able to, to pull it from the agenda to give us a little bit more time and certainly defer to the will of the board here. There's a massive gulf between what we hear said in this room and at this table, uh, and perceptions then from some of the providers. And I'm not asking anyone to view that as a validation of one view or another. What I'm saying is, um, there needs to be more communication of what one part of the entity is doing that impacts the others. And I don't think there's always, uh, a complete understanding of just how much responsibility we've taken on as the continuum of care member. I think even though it's probably a good policy choice in isolation, what we're going to do tonight is answer one part of the question in a way that leaves a bunch unanswered. And then we'll come back in a few months and say, well, didn't we address that? And folks will say, you addressed a portion of it, but you didn't seek input in terms of how that decision would impact the rest of the partners there. Or if you did, uh, the feedback wasn't, uh, heard and acted on, and that's okay. But I'd be lying to the aid of you if I said I thought I had a, a good enough understanding of what outcomes will come from this, uh, and that I think we're on sure footing in terms of knowing what that, what that's going to be. But I'm not getting in the way of voting for it tonight. But let me send you the email chain from COC members. Again, don't, don't take my word for it. Uh, look at the, the text that they provide in those emails. Look at the nuance. This isn't, you know, my concerns and my concerns alone. So I appreciate being heard and, uh, I'm no fan of long meetings either. I get that at the same time. This issue is not one that we can make a vote on and then sort of walk away from. And I, I fear we're setting ourselves up to do that in a way we don't have to. So I'll, I'll wrap up my comments there. And Chair, I appreciate you, uh, facilitating this portion of the discussion.
Look, I appreciate your comments and your perspective on it, even though we disagreed on it. Uh, I think it's a complicated issue as the whole, all the attempts that we've made at addressing the housing and homelessness crisis. Uh, it's not something that we're going to walk away from. As Commissioner Somerville has said earlier, I've, I've committed to continue working to try and, and find more sustainable solutions here. Uh, I've talked to administration about finding more sustainable solutions. This, I think, was the best solution that we could have to address the component of the system that we are directly responsible for. We have responsibility in other areas and we're going to continue working there. But I don't think anybody here know, thinks that we can, you know, pass this and feel like, okay, we solved the HAWK crisis. Not, not quite yet. We still have more work to do after this, but this is a good first step. Commissioner Somerville, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, as I mentioned in my earlier comments, I, I, you know, I plan to vote yes on this. Although I know that it's not gonna fix the bigger problem, which is the period of time that it takes once somebody's been assessed, if they're already homeless, to where they get placed. Because we have a lack of affordable housing stock. We have a lack of, a lack of family shelter space. And so, um, those are pieces of the bigger puzzle that we need to solve. Um, Administrator Dill presented some options, um, medium and long-term options that I hope we will take future action on. Um, and I also hope that, you know, working together, um, the nine of us and, and the administrative team, we can start to allocate more dollars towards this issue, um, because it, unfortunately, we need to do some things that are going to cost money for the long term, but also the medium term. Um, and the medium term is like the four, anywhere between four and eight months where a family could be homeless without anywhere to go. Uh, if there's not a space for them to go once they've been assessed. Um, so I, you know, I think some of this helps with the upfront eviction prevention piece, which is great because that's cheaper on the overall system to address the eviction. But it doesn't get to the core of the, once somebody's already homeless, all the folks that we currently have, um, on the list that don't have a placement. That's both because we don't have enough affordable housing stock. And I, I think there are real things that we could do as a county to chip away at that, but it's going to require board action. So, um, I appreciate your commitment to work with me and others on finding more money to replenish this line. And I'm not gonna, I think this is a good direction to go in, but I also think we need to continue the conversation with the system partners that we already work with. Thank you.
All right, anybody else over here? Nope. Okay. Well, Bryce, it's time.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner LaBarre.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We did it. Fantastic. Very excited about this. Thank you, Tony, for the tremendous work. Thank you, administration. Yo, go ahead, Andrew. What you got for us? I know you want to make some comments.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I, I just want to thank the board for approving that action and say that we have been paying very close attention to the discussions of this board and are trying to bring you back, uh, items which address your priorities. This included, uh, as well as many of the past that you've seen. So we have been taking furious notes and, and will certainly work to, to build your priorities into the the items that we're bringing back to you, including the discussed items that were discussed here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, that was the last item we had. So I, we go report from the county administrator. And I'd say, look, Andrew, you, you take the opportunity here, report from the deputy administrator. You don't know how many times, you know, this happens where you get an opportunity to give a report. So give, give us a little something.
Well, thank you, Chair. Uh, it's, it's quite the intro. Well, I, I feel obliged now. Uh, so I'll say, uh, just, uh, following up on that last discussion, I, I was planning to give no report. Uh, but, you know, thanks to the, the work of many, including many members of the continuum of care. I'll, I'll just provide a brief report on, um, at the last board meeting, you all voted to extend the winter sheltering season. Thank you for your support of that and for your direction on that board. Uh, I think, uh, thank you to the, the work not only of county staff, both with Brady and Tony, our director Kuyumi, uh, but also with a close partnership of Shelter Association Director Dan Kelly. We've been able to do that. Uh, that opened on, uh, whenever the Monday night would be the first and is in place for, for a second sheltering backup location through the month of April. So again, thank you for your support, uh, and that would conclude my report.
All right, very nice and well done. Man in the ship. Well, the big man is away. Greg, I hope you're not watching because we, you should not be watching. Uh, but look, we did it. All right. So moving along to, uh, a report from the chair of the Board of Commissioners. You know, it's not even nine o'clock yet, so this might be the time. I keep talking about this stack of papers I could talk about. Just kidding. Uh, items for current and future discussion. Anybody got any? Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, uh, Chair Hodge. Um, I want to note that this past Saturday, um, workers at Washtenaw County had a protest out on the steps of our county building about their ongoing labor negotiations. I'd like to thank my colleague, Commissioner Somerville, for being there. And I asked her specifically to give some words of support that I had for those workers too. I just want to call attention to the, we, we passed a resolution today to hire, um, the assistant prosecuting attorney above midpoint, which I'm all for. I think it was 100% called for, for that job and what the market says that that person should be getting, and perhaps that person should be getting even more than that. But like that person should be hired above the midpoint and maybe getting more as the market determines. I think the workers here at Washtenaw County should also be getting more and should be getting real substantive changes in their wages. And I, um, I'm hoping to see some positive, um, reports as we go forward with labor negotiations that offer workers here, um, a real chance to better their lives. So they're not using the services that we have here in this county like HAWK, Barrier Busters, and our weatherization programs. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Commissioner Robbie, go ahead.
Uh, just, I guess, building off of that too, you know, having to use the services here or not even be, being able to live in the county in many cases, uh, folks have to commute for jobs here. I mean, we are really falling behind. It's, it's actually quite embarrassing, the situation that the county's in. You know, with what we pay a lot of our staff. We, we can and must do better. I mean, some of it is just like for our own good. Like we have to be able to compete for jobs with other entities like the University of Michigan. And, you know, we can't compete with the wages that, you know, we have that we're offering, especially when we're talking about the healthcare, you know, asking our, asking our staff to pay, you know, more for healthcare, you know, in the context of these, you know, small raises. I think it's just, we, we really need to do better by our residents and our, well, frankly, both our residents and our staff. And I talk about this, I've talked about this before and I want to mention it again, which is when I started at Washtenaw County in 2011, we had a pension. We had, uh, retiree healthcare. We had really, 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 really good benefits. And some of that was unfortunately taken away by the state and some of it was taken away by the county. But either way, the employees that were hiring in since, since 2012 and 13 are not getting the same level of benefits. We used to be able to get away with, you know, sort of like at-market or slightly below-market salaries because we had this excellent benefit package. And we don't have that excellent benefit package anymore. We have a frankly, a, a subpar benefit package and we're offering subpar salaries. So we just need to do better. We need to do better, period. Part of the reason why I raised my hand though is, uh, I was hoping, I, I don't see anybody from the sheriff's office here to be able to answer this, but I was hoping we could get follow-up on my question from last meeting. And I do plan to ask this, I guess, at every meeting. You know, and I, I was actually quite disappointed that we didn't have a representative from the sheriff's office too at our working session. But, um, this question about ICE and collaboration that the sheriff's office has or doesn't have, I just need clarity for my questions. And I'd like somebody from the sheriff's office to be here to answer that. We had a member of the public that came and expressed that, uh, in what they saw, the, that there was collaboration. uh, in what they saw the, that there was collaboration between the two. And I would just like to have some clarification from the sheriff's office or being able to answer some of the questions that I have based on the documentation that I found online in terms of the sheriff's office procedures. Um, so I assume nobody from the sheriff's office is here, but maybe that's a false assumption. I don't know.
I don't know. No, the answer is no.
Okay. Uh, and I know, I know that they were invited to our working session, but did not attend, which was noteworthy. Um,
That is not, she'll say something. She said that's not accurate.
Oh, okay. I, I was made to believe that they were invited, but that's, if that's inaccurate, then.
Hold on. We, uh, we have a surprise guest, I think. To answer the question.
Maybe not. Surprise guest, maybe.
I'm sorry, that was funny. Um, it, it, it looks like Derek Jackson from the.
Director Jackson, please answer the question here around ICE and collaboration with ICE between the sheriff's office.
I'm not sure if he is actually on, but I, I do see his name.
Can I respond to the last part of that?
Well, let me finish this, this thing here, then, then you can respond and then Derek.
Oh, I, you know, I guess the uh, the last part of what I was going to say is, you know, nobody responded to constituent comments earlier, so I wanted to take a quick moment to mention that I, I really appreciate the constituents that came out um, and spoke. Um, I didn't say anything because I felt like I would just be repeating myself, but sometimes that's okay, I guess. But just, you know, I appreciate the folks that came out and spoke and expressed themselves and said what they did, uh, particularly those that are advocating for us to be creative and look at new, a new village potentially. Um, I think it's important that we listen to our constituents and the people that come to these meetings and take that into account in the context of the discussions that we're having here at this table. Um, and so, you know, I didn't want their words to fall on deaf ears and I want them to know, all of them are not here now, but maybe they'll watch this video later um, to know that uh, that I have heard them and appreciate that they've come out and expressed that. And I hope that they come out to future meetings as well because I very much um, you know, align with their sentiment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Somerville. We want to respond to that while we get Director.
Yeah, quickly. Um, so the, the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office was invited. They were, um, Director Jackson was online. I just, um, when I talked prior to the meeting to both um, C M H and the sheriff's office, I let them know that my desire was to have a strong board-led conversation tonight because I felt like it was the appropriate way for us to move forward on action items. Um, but they were here just in case questions arise. Um, so I do just want to say, uh, Director Jackson was on um, virtually and I'm sorry that I didn't indicate that at the beginning of the meeting. Um, but you know, we had fruitful conversation the whole time. So um, I just, I don't want it to seem like I lied to people that they were going to be here and they weren't because they were technically here, but I also didn't clarify that at the beginning. So for everybody here and for people who watch us later, we did have folks online just in case questions arise, but my desire was to um, have strong board engagement um, at working session because I felt like it was appropriate.
Thank you.
I think you did a fantastic job with working session. It was well done. I think that was a robust conversation that was necessary.
If, if I could say, I actually very much agree with that and it's, that's the kind of working session I think that we need to have more of where we're actually working on things. I, I really like that. So I want to give kudos to the working session chair for, for, you did a great job. You actually did do a great job. I did not mean that as, you know, casting shade on you, but I, I do, I do think that I liked that we got into the weeds and we, you know, we're talking policies. So that's great.
You and I are making a regular thing about agreeing on things. I kind of like it. This is, it's nice. It's a nice time. All right, so there is not a special guest, I'm being told. So that's it, unless, what? Okay, well, you're, you're in the queue now, because Commissioner Light is next.
I wanted to uh, just address again um, about our friends, our employees over at uh, the F O C. Uh, as the, our employees are of course, awaiting on negotiations, but while they're doing that, uh, I would just ask if our commissioners check in um, on the treatment that they are receiving um, from management, uh, that we um, indulge in that a bit in, in, it's concerning. Um, and I've been addressing the issue and so I just wanted to continue to bring that to everyone's attention um, to make sure um, that not only are we negotiating um, for them, but we are also making sure um, that our employees are being treated well. Um, for me, I, you, you know, I can understand if someone leaves because they feel they're not being paid correctly and they can make more money elsewhere. But what I cannot accept is for an employee to leave because they are being mistreated, bullied, um, discriminated on uh, in, in other things. So I just ask that you all just take notice to that and check in on our employees over at the F O C um, as they are going through a rough patch. And lastly, uh, I want to wish my son a happy birthday tomorrow. He's going to be eleven years old. And so he usually times in, so wanted to give him a shout out.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday. I'm pointing the gab at the camera. You can't see him. Okay. Oh, now you can. Happy birthday. All right, I, Commissioner Labar, go ahead. And then you, Somerville, I didn't forget about you.
Yeah, uh, just to follow up on the point that Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Robbie made. Um, Commissioner Scott, in the past, I know at least theoretically, you talked about uh, a resolution from this body outlining what we are hoping to see in terms of outcomes for those negotiations. And as we go along here, I think that becomes um, a, a better idea given the gap between when we last did this uh, per right to work and where we're at now. And candidly, um, I want to give staff the space to negotiate, but at the same time, um, I, I worry we're not giving them direction we owe them as well. And so I'm, I'm happy to follow up with you or, or whomever else uh, is interested in that to figure out what, what would that look like? But I appreciate you bringing it up.
All right, Commissioner Somerville.
All right, we made it. Um, I just wanted to comment, um, I did attend a rally hosted by some of our um, union folks this weekend. And I just want to share with the, the board and the public that I had the opportunity to meet a handful of um, county employees from various departments that have been here a couple of years, twenty-four years. And I got to hear individual stories of some of the offers and how that impacts them personally. And I would just encourage everybody to take time um, to, to talk to people in your district that um, are, you know, currently in um, negotiations and, and some of the things that they're sharing um, and how it actually plays out for them um, on an individual level. I think that like those real stories are what's missing. Um, and so uh, I support um, you know, the um, idea that we might bring a resolution forward to give more um, direction and more ability for administration to um, have more room in negotiations. I think that would be great. Um, you know, my, my desire is that we bring the bottom of the organization up, but there's also some people that have been here a long time that have reached the, the top and um, things have changed in the last ten years and the cost of living has changed. And I think that we need to just look at everything and, and we need to, everybody needs to be paid more, quite frankly. Um, so I'll just stop there, but um, you know, I think it's really important to hear those individual stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That's it?
All right, well, we will move on to pending items. There are none. I'd look for a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Oh, we are out of here. Nine o'clock on the dot.